Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Carson City Board of Health to order. Today is Thursday, May 21st, 2015. It is 8:30 a.m. We're at the Community Center Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street in our very own Carson City. Sue, could you do a verbal roll call for the record, please?
Supervisor Bowd, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shirk, Mayor Crowell, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we call on our good friend Louie Locke from the Fountainhead Forest Square Church to get us started? Louie, come on up. Do we have...
You have a microphone right there, sir.
Yeah, here it is. Hang on.
Can I use that?
Yeah.
He probably can project.
There you go. I think that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we are.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray for the people of our community. We ask for your grace and peace to be upon them. I pray for the supervisors. I pray that you give them wisdom in the decisions that they'll be making. And as we approach Memorial Day, we pray and give you thanks for those who served and gave so much for the defense of our nation. And we pray for your comfort to be upon the families of those that have been lost. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. You need to sit or use the... Sit. Try. Try to use the... We'll use the table. If you need a walking mic, we'll do that.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jody Ostrander, and I'm currently a senior at Carson High School. And as many of you know, part of being a senior at Carson High School is completing the senior project. For my senior project, I was volunteering at the Veterans Resource Center. And I want to share with you today an city initiative that derived from my senior project. So while my time at the Veterans Resource Center, I noticed that there were many needs of our veterans that weren't able to be addressed by various city resources or the Veterans Resource Center itself. So I took it upon myself to create what I like to call the Patriotic Project. And the Patriotic Project connects our community members with the needs of veterans. It's the simple needs that they may need, like mowing a lawn, house cleanup. Maybe a local contractor would like to volunteer his weekend to build a wheelchair ramp for a veteran who's now wheelchair-bound. The page... So far, the Patriotic Project has helped several veterans in our community with the volunteers we already have registered. And I'm working to expand our volunteer list and promote the Patriotic Project further in our community.
That's a wonderful idea and a wonderful project. Why don't you tell folks where the Veterans Resource Center is and kind of what you did there?
Yeah, so the Veterans Resource Center is downtown, next to the City Hall, and it's in front of the Brick. It's upstairs above Garibaldi's Restaurant. And while I was at the Veterans Resource Center, I was creating resource lists. I put together a directory of various resources in Carson City, Lyon County and Douglas County that they can use for clothing, education, really just all the resources that are out there for veterans already. And then I also create a resource list each week of available jobs to veterans and available housing that would qualify them for the grant that the VRC operates on.
Ms. Ostrander, you speak very well.
Yes, thank you.
You're a good representative of our students at the high school there, so... Board members, comments?
If somebody wanted to donate or if they wanted to volunteer, how would they contact you for this program?
Yes, so the Patriotic Project, we set up a website that's easily accessible by potential volunteers. And volunteers can go onto this website. It's thepatrioticproject.org. And from there, they fill out a quick volunteer form, their name, a way the Veterans Resource Center can contact them, and any potential services they are willing to provide to veterans.
Your mom told me about this, and I told her how... She must be very proud of you for doing this. And she handed to me flyers, which I posted, and I just wanted to share with you that it's already expressed a lot of interest for customers that come into our restaurant. They've been asking questions about it. So you've generated a buzz. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Job well done. You really did marvelous for who you are as a person and for the community itself. You really raised the bar of awareness, and I think you're going to make a significant difference in helping veterans, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anything else, board? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you got there in your hand, by the way?
I have flyers.
Why don't you hand out some of those up here on your way back to your chair? Louie, thank you for mentioning Memorial Day this morning. Good way to start off the morning. Any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any, so we'll move on to item number six, possible action approval of the minutes of April 2nd, 2015. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
I move to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2015, as presented.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Ray Bowd on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Let's take up item seven, adoption of the agenda. City manager, any changes?
No change.
Board members, any changes? Unless there's an objection, we will undertake the agenda as published. We'll adopt the agenda as published. Let's now move... If I could ask the board to move down into the well down here and do some congratulations for some of our long-term employees. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Well, this is a very special time of our board meetings where we get to celebrate our longstanding employees who help make a big difference in our community. So first, I'd like to call up Megan Sorakom. Megan, you're here for 10 years, but really it's 11, right?
I... Yes, I have been with Perks and Rec for 18 years. I started out part-time and moved into 11.
So you've been here 18 years, 11 full-time?
Yes.
Very good. Well, congratulations, and thank you for helping make Carson City a better place to live, work, play, and exercise out here in the community center. So let us hand to this, and come on up here with us, please. Thank you, Megan. Jennifer, good morning.
Jennifer Brooks. 10 years at the Carson City Sheriff's Office. How are you this morning?
I'm thank you.
On behalf of a grateful community, thank you for everything you've done for our community. Thank you for making it a safer place. Thank you for just... You know, we have a wonderful community because of folks like you, so keep up the good work. And on behalf of all of us, please accept this certificate of congratulations for 10 years of great service.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, let's now move on. Sheriff, are you ready to take up your item on the agreement with the NHP?
Let's start this off on a good foot. Love the rain.[688.45][688.45](laughing)
More of it. That's good. All right. Lots of uniforms out there today.
Before I jump right into it, let me just give you a little background brief of celebration here. It was nearly two years ago, we had a head-on accident up there at Flint Road, up on Highway 50. And the then-fire chief, Stacy Jomi, he was out there with me, and he turned to me and he said, you know, "When is this going to stop? When is this madness going to stop?" Because we were just plagued in that area. The next morning, I put a call into... It was then-Major Sanchez, Northern Command for Highway Patrol. And within weeks, we had just masses of people in a meeting, including architectural designers and everything, to redo the concepts of Highway 50 that was going to save lives. And thanks to all the work that everybody did together, including the engineers, we have had a very, very successful run of it. And the reason I bring that up is that underscores the relationship that we have here in Carson City with Nevada Highway Patrol. It has just been phenomenal, and it's been all for the good of our community residents. This is an action item to approve by resolution, a lease agreement between Carson City Sheriff's Office and the State of Nevada Public Works Division as the leasing and Department of Public Safety Nevada Highway Patrol as the tenant. Currently, shortly after we started these operations, under Sheriff Albertson and I approached Nevada Highway Patrol about working closer together. At the time, Nevada Highway Patrol was staffed on Curry Street, and that represented the Carson, Tahoe, Douglas region for all operations. We believed at the time that Nevada Highway Patrol was not budgeted for the action, to make a move to work closely together, but that that should not hinder our cooperation and our agreements and such. And as time went on, their substation has moved over to the Sheriff's Office in vacated office space because of our drawdowns, obviously. But this building still remains relatively a new building, but we have substantially less staffing needs today. This has resulted in nothing but positive things. As the transition went through, the Department of Public Safety was tasked with funding quite a bit of communications alterations or upgrades, if you wish to use those terms. And we have progressed to the point today. I will... In addition to Lieutenant Lawson, who has provided absolutely superior leadership in that area and facility, and many of their policies and practices, we have now adopted within our own agency. That overlapping responsibility has really been a benefit. But I would like to give Ms. Bauer a chance to explain why this is a resolution and not a firm and final action here. So if you will.
Good morning. Jennifer Bauer with the Director's Office of the Department of Public Safety. I represent Highway Patrol in the contracts management function. We previously appeared before this board for approval of an interlocal agreement that was provided pursuant to NRS 277. The attorneys involved at the time opined that the interlocal agreement was appropriate because there was no rent exchanged for this co-location. It was a cooperative effort. As the sheriff mentioned, the Nevada Highway Patrol was not budgeted for this rent, but it was a cooperative effort that was in the best interest of the community. At that time, we realized that at some point, we need to pay the sheriff and the city for our space use. The Nevada Highway Patrol needs to contribute. We realized that. We appropriated or we requested appropriation in our budget for rent. That has been closed. Our budgets were closed last week. We do have approval, and now we're before you for an actual lease agreement instead of an interlocal cooperative arrangement. And that lease agreement would run through the same term of November 2018 as the interlocal agreement, except that now it's a true lease because we are paying rent. And that's what we're here requesting approval for.
Let's hope the budgets stay closed.[980.23][980.23](laughing)
Incidentally, the commanding officers couldn't be here because they're addressing vehicle issues as well.
Yes, the Colonel regrets that he can't be here today. He planned on being here before you, except at about 5:00 o'clock last night, he got notification that his one shot for his entire fleet was going to be heard today at the same time. He had to prioritize, and he apologizes.
I understand the priority. And just make sure you pass on to him, I think, at least from my perspective, it is extremely valuable that, you know, we see here sitting in front of us cooperation between our local Sheriff's Office and the State Highway Patrol. I mean, we live in the capital city, and it is extremely important that we all get along together here. And regardless of what this lease agreement does or doesn't do, I think it is extremely valuable, and my hat's off to you guys for putting this together, for showing the cooperation we've got for the safety of our citizens. So pass that on, and Sheriff, that's to you too as well. So board members, you got it done, Sheriff? We got... Ready for questions?
There was one question, and I would throw it back over to Denise about rates. We went through the gamut over this period of time. Incidentally, this has been a long project. This has not been a short one. Originally, and I'm just reflecting on tabletop conversation, we discussed a fee of a buck fifty a square foot after everybody got done choking, when she offered me 50 cents. We actually came to an agreement, and I believe this rate per footage is consistent with the rate that Nevada Highway Patrol does pay statewide.
Jennifer Bauer, again, actually, we are paying you more than we pay the State Public Works Division. The current legislative approved rate is 97 cents per foot. We're going to be paying a dollar per foot, so you get a three cent bonus. This dollar per foot is consistent with what we pay the City of Las Vegas for a substation that serves the Indian Springs location, so we're trying to remain consistent.
And as this gets approved, and there is a process beyond, a lengthy process beyond this that we have to comply with, I will be speaking with Mr. Morano about the use of the funds and so on. Right now, I believe this is all... All funds are dedicated to go back to City General Fund.
Yes, and that's actually a good point. After your approval, if you're so gracious to approve this, we do need at the next step to go to the Nevada State Board of Examiners. They are the final approval for all lease agreements where Nevada is a state entity to that lease. So the goal is the July Board of Examiners, which is tentatively scheduled for the 9th.
Okay. Other board questions, comments? Anybody in the public want to weigh in? Anybody? Motion's in order. Some do. Supervisor Ray Bowd.
I move to approve by resolution pursuant to NRS 277.050, the lease agreement between the Carson City Sheriff's Office as the lessor and the State of Nevada's Public Works Division as the leasing and the Department of Public Safety's Nevada Highway Patrol as the tenant.
Motion by Supervisor Ray Bowd, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kenny?
I said by resolution.
Right. That's okay. You want to revisit it?
No, 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 no.[1205.15][1205.15](laughing)
Well, we have all ayes, so...
I have my foot halfway out of this chair.
Good. The record reflects that there were five ayes and no nays.
And it was resolution 20.
And it was resolution 20.
Resolution 20.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Are we ready for item number 10? Armac, you want... Who's going to do this? Mr. Providenti, you going to do it?
Sure. Sure, I'll do it, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, for the record. Nick Providenti, Finance Director. So we're asking you to determine that Armac Construction is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS 338, and actually award the contract for the West Eighth Street Sewer Replacement Project to them for a bid amount of $147,012 with a contingency not to exceed $14,701 for a total amount of $161,713. It'll be funded from the sewer fund. And we have Danny Roder here if you have any specific questions on the project.
Why don't you tell us what's going on with the project, Mr. Roder?
Danny Roder, Engineering Manager, for the record. This is a six-inch clay sewer line, easily 40 years old. Just one of the items that's been on the list for a while, so we're going to knock it off the list and move on, so...
Public comment? Board comment? Anybody? Supervisor Shirk, go.
I'm just curious. Will this be... Will materials be purchased on this contract in similar fashion, which just came up at the legislature where we're not paying sales tax on it? The city's purchasing any and all material for this project? Is that ongoing with this project as well?
No, not on this project.
Why not this project?
Did the bill pass?
AB 332 has not passed yet.
Is that what you're talking about?
But we expect that it will, unfortunately.
Well, I'm talking about the contract we have with Bill Miles for the MAC that we're... Are we not purchasing material for him on that project with no sales tax?
On this project, we're not purchasing materials.
But on the MAC, we did.
On the MAC, we did.
So my question is, why aren't we doing it for this project?
It wasn't substantial enough to try and coordinate the city staff time for the materials.
Okay, so is there a dollar amount level we have? I'm just curious.
We take it day by day, project by project.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Not motions in order. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to determine that Armac Construction LLC is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 338, and to award contract number 1415-156 titled West Eighth Street Sewer Replacement Project to Armac Construction LLC for a base bid amount of $147,012 and a contingency amount not to exceed $14,701 for a total contract amount of $161,713 to be funded from the Capital Projects Construction Project 051403 account in the sewer fund as provided in the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Ray Bowd on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, next. Mr. Providenti, you going to stay there?
Sure.
All right.
Very comfortable chair.
Let's hope it stays that way.
Again, for the record, Nick Providenti, Finance Director. So we're asking you to approve on first reading. This is the 2015 A Sewer Bond Ordinance, so this is kind of the next step in the process. We do have members from Bond Council here if you had any questions. This is $12 million of sewer bonds that we anticipate getting from the State Revolving Fund. It'll finish... It'll be used to finish off the project that we have. I think it's a $32 million project over at the treatment plant, so this is that final piece. And this is, again, first reading, and we will need a bill number.
Mr. Roder, do you want to just give a... Is that overview enough, or you want to just ink in on what we're using the money for and go for a little more detail?
I'll just mention that that project we just approved has SRF loans from before. This is just following up. Most of this money is treatment plant money, but there is, I think, a portion of it that goes to Empire Lift Station and a couple other sewer-related items, but I think the majority of this one's going to the treatment plant.
And SRF State Revolving Fund?
Correct.
Okay. Public comment? Board comment? Anybody? We okay with this? Final bond for this one, for the sewer upgrades? Okay.
Bill number 107.
Supervisor Ray Bowd, go.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill number 107, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada designated by the short title 2015 A Sewer Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of its general obligation limited tax sewer bond additionally secured by pledge revenues, Series 2015A, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bond, providing for the levy and collection of annual general ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bond, additionally securing its payment by a pledge of revenues derived from the sanitary sewer system and drainage system of the city, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Motion by Supervisor Ray Bowd, second by Supervisor Bonkowski on the motion discussion. Supervisor Shirk, go.
I just want to make note that I am voting in favor of this, even though I voted against the increases in sewer. This is just a procedure that we're going through. It passed, but I just want to make reference that I did not vote in favor of the increase in sewer.
Go.
Sorry, just one question. In the motion, it indicates the annual collection of ad valorem taxes. We don't have any actual dedicated ad valorem to this project, right? Is that just standard bond language?
That's correct.
Because it's really all revenue, so I just wanted to clarify.
That's correct. It provides for the levy if we need to do it. We don't anticipate needing to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good bond discussion. On the motion discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roder. Mr. Providenti?
Sure. Again, Nick Providenti, for the record, this is the action to accept our report on the condition of the treasury through May 12th, 2015. If there's any questions?
Public comment? Anybody? Board comments? Go. Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury and the statement of receipts and expenditures through May 12th, 2015 pursuant to NRS 251030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion by Supervisor Bagwell, second by Supervisor Ray Bowd on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying not... Aye. 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 Saying none, yeah, whatever. Oppose, nay. Passed unanimous. Thanks. I'll get there. Melanie, Ms. Bruketa, go.
Good morning, Melanie Bruketa, Human Resources Director. I'm here to present the request to approve the city's vision insurance plan with VSP. The current plan, we would have seen an increase, however, we chose to go with a new plan that has basically the same co-pays. The only difference is there is a slight increase in the cost for the employees for frames and lenses. And this is a two-year vision plan.
Public comment? Seeing none. Board comments? Supervisor Shirk, then Supervisor Ray Bowd.
Good morning, Melanie. I'm just curious, is the employees' association, do they approve this? Do they look at it and give their nod of approval, or...
We didn't have the renewal from VSP when we took this to the... When we took the medical and dental to the employees' associations, however, they did approve the medical and dental. I don't... If I had foreseen any problems with the vision, I certainly would have reached out to the committee, but I don't think there will be any problems.
Thank you.
Melanie, just for the record, what's the overall savings due to the rate reduction?
Well, finance didn't actually calculate an overall savings because of an increase, maybe... Do you want to talk about that? I don't... I have it here.
I don't imagine it's very substantial. Yeah, it's very minor. Yeah, so, I mean, typically, those kind of things get lost in the rounding, so, I mean, yeah, it's pennies, right?
Yeah. So...
Little comments or discussion from the board? Motion's in order. Who wants to do it? Anybody? Anybody? Supervisor Bagwell, then.
I move to approve the employee vision plan with VSP for a two-year period.
Motion by Supervisor Bagwell, second by Supervisor Bonkowski, on a motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous, thank you very much. Let's take up the Schultz Ranch Maintenance, oh, wait a second.
Wait, I need my medical approved.
Health and dental. Glad you guys are watching me today.
The next item, the next item is to approve the employee health and dental insurance plans with Prominence Health Plan. We do have an increase of 1.75%, and that's to offset the cost of the state premium insurance tax increase that will take effect.
Okay, that's why I didn't want to hear this one, all right. Next one, public comment, anybody? Board, discussion? Anybody? Supervisor Bagwell.
Just as a comment, it is, however, less than, we did budget for this, so there, we knew the increase was coming in the budget, so.
Correct.
So we don't have a hold, a plug.
Right, we actually budgeted five percent, a five percent increase. And so in a future meeting, hopefully the next meeting, we'll be talking about what we're going to do with that difference, moving it over to the other post-employment benefit trust that we want to establish, correct.
All right, further discussion? Further questions? Okay, we ready for motion, Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I move to approve the employee health and dental insurance plans with Prominence Health Plan.
Motion by Supervisor Bagwell, second by Supervisor Aboud, on a motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous, thank you. Now we'll take up the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Agreement. Who's doing this one?
That will be me.
Okay.
That'll be me.
Mr. Mullen Dorff.
Good morning, for the record, Roger Mullen Dorff, Parks and Recreation Director. And we're back here for the second reading of Bill number 106, an ordinance approving the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement. This was brought to you for the first reading, I believe, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. If you have any questions regarding.
Any changes that have been suggested to you?
No, there's been no changes.
Any, no, any comments given to you between now and the first reading?
No comments.
Okay, public comments? Anybody? Don't see any board comments? Ordinance?
Four.
Go.
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill number 106, Ordinance Number Four, an ordinance approving the Schultz Ranch Maintenance District Development Agreement for the planned Schultz Ranch, Schultz Ranch development.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by a couple, on the motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous. All right, let's take up item 13B, the Cultural Commission's 2014-15 Annual Report. Let me first say, I apologize for not being able to have the time to hear this last time. Not that we've given it short shrift, just things happen, so welcome back and thank you for doing what you're doing, go.
Okay, I'm Eleanor Bugley, Chair of the Cultural Commission. Hi. And we're here for approval of the annual report for this year and the proposed report or plan for next year.
And for the record, I'm Terry McBride, I'm the Vice Chair of the Cultural Commission.
Want to walk, you got to walk through it, write a little bit?
Excuse me?
Going to walk, you're going to walk through the plan a little bit.
Well, first, first I just wanted to highlight.
You do it.
A couple of things that we thought were pretty important. You've received the annual report in your packet, I believe, and so I just wanted to highlight a couple of items on that, from that memorandum. Last June, we went on a walk, on a, on a walking art tour of Reno with Christine Fay, the Reno Cultural Affairs Manager, Culture Affairs. She reminded us that as we build up public art and cultural events in Carson City, not to ignore small things. As she reminded us, we should always insinuate art in unexpected places. We met with the Historic Resources Commission last fall to attend a presentation on plans for Nevada State Prison. Then in December, we took recommendations from the Nevada Arts Council on funding opportunities that these granting organizations are going to want to see a cultural master plan. That's what they advised us. Then in March, our following meeting, we reviewed some documents that staff at Parks and Rec had found, had been reminded of, and then looked up and provided for us. There, one was the Carson City's Arts Assessment that was done in 2001, which was a large survey of hundreds of people in the community about what our needs for art and culture in Carson City are. And then in 2002, to piggyback on that, the Creative Capital Arts Plan was developed. And we read through these and recommended that the city use these two as a working cultural master plan, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We were reminded several times by active people in the arts community that evening not to try and reinvent the wheel, not to try to spend large amounts of money to redo these documents, but with a little bit of updating and fine tuning, these documents are actually still relevant and usable. So that's the recommendation we came up with in March at our meeting, was to recommend that Carson City move forward with these goals and missions in mind. The city did at, at a couple of, at a couple of occasions, refer to these documents in the, let's see, in the 2002 City Strategic Plan, and then in the Parks and Recreation 2006 Master Plan. These assessments and arts plans were referenced in those plans. So we don't believe that they were officially adopted as a cultural master plan, but they were referenced, they have been used. We feel that it would be a good signal to potential funding sources that Carson City has a master plan, and, and that we have a direction forward. That's what granters are going to want to see. We on the commission view these documents in which so much money and time went, went, as good working documents that may need minor adjustments, but the missions and goals outlined in these reports are relevant. On May 6th, finally, we approved recommendations for funding of six cultural events through the RAC funds. We decided to fund all of the requesters at 75%. We didn't, so we didn't leave anybody out, but there, of course, the requests were more than the fund that we had. So we, across the board, recommended that they get funded 75% for their special events. Finally, the Cultural Commission fully intends to find outside sources of funding to support arts in our community, and as, as we continue to also urge the supervisors to include an art and cultural component in the eighth cent sales tax. We see the downtown Carson Street development as a timely opportunity to install public art and to enhance the community. We feel the same way about the Third Street Plaza. So we look forward to those exciting opportunities to make our community an even better place to live. Thank you.
Public, excuse me, public comment on this issue? Board, go. Got a couple lights up here. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Good morning. I don't have any real disagreement with using these plans as the foundation of a master plan. I don't know that I would necessarily agree that it only needs minor updating. I think it needs major updating. There's a lot of things in here that are very out of date, including there's a reference to the city's renovation reimbursement program, which we got rid of years ago. The word capital is spelled right maybe three times and misspelled maybe forty times. So I just think that before we actually take a vote to accept this, I know we're only approving the work plan, but before this comes back to the board, I'd like to see it updated so that the demographic information, the references, the spelling, everything is corrected. Thank you.
Supervisor Bagwell.
So I notice in your work plan, coordinate a grant, grant application process with community development. Are you indicating that you'd like to change the application process that you utilized currently? That you did this year? You, you want changes? Is that what this refers to?
We would like to have, to develop guidelines for evaluating the grants before we approve them, instead of just saying whatever anybody asked for is what they should get, or that they should all be reduced by the same amount to go through.
So I'd like to recommend that you work with the other group that is also doing that, so that we can potentially have some consistency in processing.
Yes, yes.
So if you can work with Janice in our Community Development Office. And then I like number seven, so it was reach out to Carson High School's AP Art Class for future senior meal projects. So do you anticipate potentially asking that class to do something in our downtown?
That's already begun.
Oh, great, great, I like that.
Just to add to what Supervisor Bonkowski, his recommendations, I just want to stress that we, as part of the Cultural Commission, do our revisions on this plan in a timely fashion, so that we can move forward in our grant opportunities.
Yeah, number eight, can you give me a little more specifically what you're talking about there to support the art and, using the one in sales tax? Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, that would be in the, in designing the new space to be, excuse me, allergies, to be sure to incorporate and include the artistic features of the elements that are in the, in the Third Street Plaza and their downtown development.
You just want to be part of the, the process of, of discussion, is what you're asking for in this, right?
Yes.
You're not asking for any money?
No.
There was a little confusion on that.
No.
Thank you.
Just to clarify on both Supervisor Sherks and Aboud's comments, the portion of the art exhibits that would be included in any corridor improvements would be, you'd be pursuing grant funding for those items, correct? Because we've already set what we can spend money on as far as the infrastructure improvement.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other, just comments or questions from the board? We ready? Go, go.
I do want to say, I think you're off to a great start. I, I think this is something that's been needed for a lot of years, and I think this is, will really help the arts and really bring forward a lot of things. I commend you for what you're doing, and I look forward to how you come back and what you're going to do and how you're going to do it, because I think it's going to really help Carson City, so congratulations for what you're doing.
We look forward to coming back and, and highlighting great things that we've done over the last year as well.
You want to make the motion? Do you want somebody else? Okay.
I will.
Go.
I move to accept the Cultural Commission's 2014/15 Annual Report and approve the Commission's 2015/16 Work Plan.
And I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion's in order.
Okay. I would just like to add to Jim's motion. We accept this work plan that will be updated in a timely fashion on the cultural master plan.
Maker of the motion have any changes?
I don't know how you're going to, maybe you can say a time period, but I don't know how you're going to make the motion to update. That could be ten years from now or two years.
Within the next, within the next six months that this is updated. Okay.
So you'll come back to us within six months? I, I.
You okay with that?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll second.
We clear on the motion? Got it? All right, on the motion, all in favor, signify by, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried unanimous, thank you. All right. Let's take up. CDBG. What happened to Ventana Sierra?
They emailed me and told me they were no longer going to do their project. They were supposed to buy, I believe it was a third house, and they decided not to. They're going to be looking for something in Washoe Valley now, or Washoe County, so.
So this side, could I go ahead?
So, do you want me to read that?
Yeah. Give us the history and tell us what's happening here. Sorry for jumping the gun on that one.
So this is to take action on the proposed amendment to the CDBG 2014-15 Action Plan, which is the current fiscal year, to reallocate the $25,000 to ADA improvements at the community development offices, our offices at 108 East Proctor Street, and officially on this planned amendment to take action to open the 38 public comment period for the proposed amendment. So as, as Janice said, the Ventana Sierra pulled out, informed us they weren't going to use this money. This is, this is not, and by the way, this is not the pool of money that we recently went through, fairly recently, and allocated for next fiscal year. This is the previous year, they have, they've had it and have decided not to pursue it. So we're towards the end of the year in which they were supposed to spend this money. At about the same time, well, with this, this lift, this lift in the brick is our ADA access to the, to the second floor. And, and Ron Reed is here from Maintenance and can answer questions on that if you have any. But basically around the same time, and in fact, before that, Bob Keith, who's retired now, but with Maintenance was saying, we need, we need to replace this, was looking at cost estimates, about $27,000 is the estimate we have. And then this came available, which has been used for ADA improvements to, in this building, a couple times in this building to do improvements. And so we thought, here's, here's a pool of grant money that we could use to improve the ADA improvements and not have to use general fund money to do this. So, so we're bringing this for you and requesting that we amend the plan and recommending using the CDBG funds for this ADA access. You know, I've had some questions. It is an older one, it's a lift that was in there when we had the building. Just as an anecdote, I like telling this story, we haven't, we've had people get stuck in there with, in wheelchairs where, for a long time, until somebody comes down to fix it. We have an employee that takes a screwdriver with her in it so that she can jimmy the door open when it doesn't make it all the way to the top. So it, it's definitely need a repair, it's ongoing maintenance, so we think this is, this is our recommended alternative.
Public comment? Board? Supervisor Sherk.
Lee, was this listed on the capital improvements projects?
No, it was not. Yeah, it came, again, it's kind of, it's been, it's a break-fix thing, it was only, only recently. It was kind of a more, just in the last few weeks that it came up as, really, there's no replacement parts, it's an older, and finally got from them, it's older, and it just should be replaced at this point. So it's only more recent than that list that was prepared a while ago.
But this grant money could be used in public walkways, publics access, or whatever. My objection to this is, this is a city-owned project or building, and we're taking grant funding to improve something that needs improvement, I get it, but I think that should be coming from the capital funding and not from this. I think this should go back into the public. I think this should be allocated for public access in the ADA venue, not into a owned building by the city. I think that should come out of capital improvements.
And I should mention that, that is an alternative, is to put this back into the pool of CDBG money for, for other projects, which could include other city sidewalk projects or private public infrastructure pub, public projects.
And I also had a comment on, on that. HUD requires our department to be ADA accessible, because we manage a CDBG program. So they have actually come out to see if we were. So that the, the way the lift is now, I don't think we are complaining, because it's, it keeps breaking.
And I understand both, both points of view. However, I believe this is, this funding should be, go to the public access areas. I know transportation is really hurting, they had to cut some other funds out so we could allocate this money to go some other places. So we cut their budget for the ADA handicap ramps and areas within town, and we took this money, put it here. And now we're taking it, I think it should go back to where we originally intended it or took it from. That's, I will not vote in favor of this.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
I'm actually going to come down on the same side as Jim on this one. I think that this money should probably go back into the grant pool funding. I think that we can leverage the money, if, if we agree to use it for sidewalks, we can leverage that three to four to one. And we have other sources of funding, contingency, break-fix, the extraordinary maintenance fund that we just approved. So we have other places. So, we have other places that we can go to, to get money to make this fix, so that's what I'd like to see.
Supervisor Bagwell.
So, I, I thought during discussion that we had, that Darren had indicated on the sidewalks, though, that they were at maximum capacity, so we wouldn't, he wouldn't be able to do more sidewalks with match, because he was at capacity. So, while normally, I agree with what you're saying, Brad, I thought he said he couldn't do anymore. And when does the funding end? Because I know that this CDBG is from prior year pool, so what's our date for usage on this grant funding?
By June 30th.
This June?
So, this, if we put this back next June, is it a two, one-year extension? We could, we could roll it over, so it's just set to expire for Ventana Sierra this June, but if we decide to roll it over, then...
But we have the federal authority to go one more year? Okay, because I wanted, first, I thought, wait, we're going to lose this money if we don't spend it right away, but we can extend one year? But was that not testimony from Darren that they couldn't use anymore in the street account?
I think that would be for this fiscal year, and we're talking about possibly using it for next fiscal year.
Go ahead.
I would just like to state that I feel that this money should be put back into the pool of monies and represented, or be part of the pot that, that other folks apply for as well. I just don't feel that we should, the, the city should step in and utilize those funds just because they came available.
I think it's pretty difficult, and I'm on the other side, but I, because I think it's pretty difficult to have a CDBG program specifically designed for handicap accessibility, low-income issues, and to have a handicap accessibility problem in our very building where we decide and analyze these issues, not be ADA compliant or ADA problem. So, you know, it is what it is, so that's where I am on it. Supervisor Bagwell.
Well, and I guess the other issue for me is CDBG is all about ADA, ADA and low-income access, so I think this is specifically what CDBG is all about. So, I don't have a problem funding this proposal from it, as that is an appropriate use of these dollars. That's what CDBG is all about. So, it's not an improper expenditure from this account. I just want to say it's not improper.
Okay, I got, Supervisor, go.
Janice, can you explain how this funding and how doing the lift fits the low to moderate income category? Because that is unclear in terms of the application.
It falls under ADA accessibility, which is a presumed low to moderate income. We, all the sidewalks, we do qualify, they're called ADA sidewalk improvements, so those are always in low-income areas. So, it's, we did some, the lift here, right there, actually, this is not in a low to moderate income neighborhood, this community center, but we were able to do that, because it's considered ADA. It's just one of the, the eligible activities under the CDBG program.
Okay, well, it looks like it maybe is three to two here, but we'll see. Somebody want to make a motion to, go, I'm sorry.
It just, so just timing-wise, so seeing where it's going to, so as I said, we, just recently, we're not even in the next year's pool yet, and it's going to be another eight months, it's going to be another nine, 10 months before we're back for next year's round of money. So, I don't think you necessarily are saying you want to put this in, put it out another 10 months to that pool of money. So, a suggestion might be to put it in the sidewalk. So, we've, we've just recently had a round of applications for, for, for funding, which was the, the, the school district and sidewalks are pretty much the two things that, that got funded and have some money. So, if it's going anywhere, we are, we do have the responsibility to, to use the money to HUD and spend a certain percentage each year. So, I, I think the motion should include coming back with something specific, rather than just not doing anything with it for another year.
I, I, I can't, personally, I can't go there. I mean, I'm either up or down on it, because I think that, what are you doing? I mean, you're saying, hey, bring, come back with another project. It's the same deal, you either put it back in the pot or you don't. I mean, for people to, people to make their decisions. I mean, that's what's going on here. DA?
Mayor, I just want to remind everybody to stay, be conscientious of the way that the agenda has been, has been crafted, the agenda item.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we, we need, I, I think ultimately, we need to amend the action plan. We've told CDBG we're going to do this project, so I think one way or another, we need to amend the action plan. So, I think, based on your action here, we need to come back with something, whether it's putting it into administrative and just saving it for the future, or what. We are going to have to come back with something to tell HUD that we're not, that this, we're not going to do this project.
I think the DA has made a good point, so I think we know where we're going, so...
We're going to have to, we'll have to ask them.
Yeah, well, what I suggest is maybe just opening a 30-day comment period, and during that 30 days, we can come up with what we want to do with it.
Some alternatives.
It's always fun to have money. Go.
Well, that's, that's the exact point I was going to make. What we're looking at doing today is opening up a 30-day comment period, so it's coming back to us in 30 days anyway. So, let's get some input from the public and see if they think that it's a good idea to do the lift, or if they think it should go towards sidewalks, or if it should go back into the pool. We can have this discussion and make a final decision 30 days from now.
Yeah.
How are we going to have a 30-day discussion period? How would that be put out to the public for them to access and put input into it? So, what is, how would that take place?
What, what we would do at a minimum is talk with Public Works regarding the sidewalk, those applicants that were as part of the pool that recently applied, and let them know that this has come, this has come available, and that potentially, they may want to comment on this. In terms of advertising citywide for public facility projects, this is, this, she was saying, and I, I said administratively, maybe we keep it there, but actually, there's a cap on how much administrative you can use, so we can't even do that. This has to be for a, a public facilities project. It has to go towards public facilities. So, we would contact those public facilities applicants and inform them of it. For $25,000, I, I, we could put an ad in the paper, but I don't know how, we have our list, we have our list of usual applicants that we would inform of.
It's also been noticed in the paper already, this, this meeting and the 30-day comment period, as part of our citizen participation.
Well, the 30-day comment period's been noticed?
Yeah, it's, so we do have 30 days anyway, this, once you open it.
So, you've already done a 30-day notice?
Well, we put it in the paper, that it's going to be open today.
That this agenda item will be up. So, is the, is what, you know, if, just to be clear, is what you're suggesting is if it goes, if it opens a 30-day notice period, is the 30-day notice period say that we intend, whoever intends to expend it for the lift, or is it just going to open it up and say there's $25,000 extra, reallocate? What are we going to do?
Right, it's just opened up for comments. So, whatever you decide, whatever your decision is today, is, then you open that up for comments. So, if you decide you want to wait to see what people say about it, then that's, that's what is going to be discussed during the comment period.
So, basically, you're going to reach out to those individuals that you've had contact with before about this money, but you're also, if I'm understanding, this 30-day reach period or comment period, you still have to reach the public in some fashion, correct?
Yeah, so, so we're going to, we've already noticed it in the newspaper, so it's, that's required by HUD when we make any sort of amendment. So, whether we decide to do it for the lift, or we decide to do it for something else, there's, that comment period is required when we amend this action plan, because we have to amend it, because we're no longer doing the Ventana Sierra project. So, we have to do something with the money, so if we decide to roll it over to next year, that's still an amendment that I will have to make in that action plan.
But that notice that you put in the paper already is for this agenda item?
Right.
Okay, but we're now making a motion that you have to give 30 days public input, so that you would have to run another advertisement. Am I, am I wrong about that? Why would I be wrong?
Right. Well, because the initial notice that I already placed in the newspaper already talked about this 30-day comment period, when it starts, when it ends, when comments are due. So, it was actually a pretty long notice, so we're only required to put one in. And then, before the next meeting, I notice again. So, the next board meeting, I believe, is going to be sometime, the first one in July, and then I'll notice that meeting also, that come, that we're going to be taking action on this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Brad and Lori. Lori.
The notice, however, indicated it was for the wheelchair access. If we were to not include that and pick another project later, would we not have to notice and start a 30-day comment period again on the proposed project? Because it's the notice...
I don't think so, but I will ask our HUD rep.
And so, what I'm trying to get at here is, we can approve this motion as stated and wait for the comment period to see if anyone has a problem with the wheelchair access. If we receive no comments over the next 30 days that anyone has an issue with it, and then we can check with streets to, again, double-check whether or not we can get a bigger bang for our dollar here. So, I don't think there's an actual issue with this motion as stated. We get to make the decision in 30 days, based on comments received and information that the streets can provide us, and we could make a different decision at the end of the 30 days, and you'll check the re-noticing, we can make a different decision than the ramp or the lift.
Right, so if we open, if we use this motion and open it, after 30 days, we decide we don't want to do that, then you decide what else you want to do.
Okay.
All right. Go, go.
I move to open a 30-day comment period from May 21st, 2015, to June 19th, 2015, regarding a proposed amendment to the Carson City Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Aboud on motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes, passes three to two.
You flipped.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you did. They didn't allocate it to the ramp. You're into the lift. Okay.
Couldn't have to be opened up anyway, I mean, I'm, I'm, go. All right. You can, go, next.
Thank you. Next, next item is action to adopt Bill Number 105 on second reading, an ordinance approving amendment to the development agreement between Carson City and Roventini LLC to the, to extend the tentative planned unit development map for Clearview Ridge subdivision to September 6, 2018, subject to the developer completing certain required off-site improvements. This is second reading. At the last meeting, you had first reading of this ordinance with the, with the development agreement amendment attached, and we have received no additional comments since first reading.
Disclosure in order.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. The developer on this project, Mr. Newfer, has a daughter who works for my business as a bus girl. However, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. The public policy of this state favors the right for me, as a public official, to perform the duties for which I was elected and to vote, provided I properly disclose. I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this private commitment, and because this is not a clear case of a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be voting on this matter.
All right. Let me see here. Public comment on this issue? Any changes since the first reading?
No, sir.
Anybody? Motion's in order.
Lee, quickly, can you walk us through how you handle updating conditions on a tentative map that was originally approved six or eight years ago, when they finally decided to build?
Updating conditions as it pertains to when we do a development agreement, I...
Right, development agreement, how it pertains to current building codes, rather than the codes that maybe were in place.
Oh, that are referenced in there. Well, yeah, as a matter of standard practice, you know, and that, and that's a good point to probably make to the building department, as we do these special use permits and things, tentative maps that may be built in the future under different codes, because we, they always have to comply with future codes in terms of codes at the time of submitting a building permit. So, you know, that's something, that's something to think about, and for, for the future, actually, too, because we always do that and include those conditions, but maybe they should comply with current codes, is maybe all that should say. So, how we deal with conditions and how they're amended, so when, when a subdivision or special use permit applicable to a development agreement is approved, it has conditions, those are the conditions as approved by the board or planning commission in that point of time, but, and, and they are attached to any development agreements and reference therein, but the development agreement may amend some of those conditions. So, we don't literally go back and change the text of the conditions that are attached, but we, as we go through, we look through the development agreement first in the file to go back and see what the conditions for that development are, and so those supersede any, any conditions, and I think by, by law, too, that, that agreement supersedes any conditions that are in conflict with the original conditions of approval. Does that answer your question?
You want to weigh in now?
Yes, Supervisor Bonkowski, we could always add to the amendment a paragraph that states that they have to comply with any new provisions.
Right, and that's kind of where I'm headed with this. We never approved tentative maps or development agreements with the thought that it might be five, or 10, or 12, or 15 years down the road before that project gets built. So, I think that it would behoove us to try to think that far out now and make sure that we've covered our bases, so that we don't run into problems down the road, or conflicts between different building codes, or what, what was meant then and what we mean now.
And a motion could also be made with the condition that we put that third paragraph on the amendment as well.
You know, my preference would be to have Lee to come back to us with some recommendations, rather than try to handle that in a motion on a, on a development agreement where we've also, where we've already had a first reading.
Okay, pub, public comment? Anybody? Board, further discussion?
Ordinance.
Ordinance?
2015 Resolution 5.
Go, Brad.
I move to adopt Bill Number 105 on second reading. Ordinance Number 2015 R5, an ordinance approving an amendment to a development agreement between Carson City and Roventini LLC, to extend the tentative planned unit development map expiration date to September 6, 2018, for the development known as Clearview Ridge, located west of Cochise Street, between West Roventini Way and West Overland Street, east of Voltaire Street, APNs 9-263-06, 07, 08, and 09, and to require the developer to complete certain off-site infrastructure improvements by December 35th, December 31st, 2015, and matters properly related thereto.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, second by Supervisor Shirk on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous, okay. Are we ready to recess and take a break till we get onto the Board of Health? We'll be in recess for about 10 minutes, until the Board of Health gets going, so we'll start up with the Board of Health about 10 to, 10 to. start up with the Board of Health about 10 to, 10 to.[526.79]
I will call the, call to order the Board of Health for Carson City and ask for a call, a roll call. Sheriff Furlong?
Here.
Supervisor Aboud?
Still here.
Supervisor Brunkowski?
Still here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Shirk?
Right here.
Dr. Pentar?
I'm still here too.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment to begin the meeting? All right, onwards and upwards. I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of April 2nd, 2015, which I believe were included in your packet.
I move to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2015 as published.
Second.
Motion in second has been made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Under item 19, we have A through E. I would like to move item E, which is Presentation and Discussion of the Accreditation after A.
Okay.
Okay, nobody cares. All right, very good. So, sir, would you be so kind as to tell us about Bike Month?
I will, but your iPad is, your iPad is on my proclamation.
Oh, well, perhaps I will move it over.
Okay. Let's have Courtney come on up.
Well, actually, it's going to be Nikki.
Nikki, you're going to do it? Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation from here then, is that all right?
That's perfect.
Okay, here we go. All right, this is the proclamation for Bike Month, May 2015, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Carson City's scenic beauty, fits right in with epic rides. And whereas Carson City recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users who are therefore entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in Carson City, and legal and responsible applies both ways, right? Whereas Carson City recognizing the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling. And whereas Carson City has been designated as a bronze-level bicycle-friendly city by the League of American Bicyclists, cheers. Whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, grow the economy, attract tourism dollars, improve traffic safety, and reduce pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas Carson City is committed to the inclusion of bicycle facilities as part of the vision for revitalizing Carson City. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Carson City will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, commuting events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. Now therefore, I, Robert Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Bike Month in our great city of Carson.
Yay.
All right, Nikki, here you go. Please put this up.
Thank you, Mayor, and...
When we come down, give this to you here.
So he doesn't spill a lot.
So he can get rid of it.
So he doesn't spill his coffee. Thank you, and I'm accepting this on behalf of Courtney. Courtney's actually at a conference in Reno and presenting to individuals on the transportation, bicycling in rural communities. So, and she asked me to extend thanks and support and participation. Carson City's moving in a positive direction in regards to bikes. A large number of community members are interested in biking events, which we've seen over 100 readers, writers participate in the Tour de Carson and the West Side Cruiser Ride. So, I, we really appreciate the participation of the community members and the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will go to Agenda Item E, which is for discussion only, but we will present and discuss Carson City Health and Human Services Accreditation Document Submission, which was quite the ordeal, Ms. Quape.
She's on set.
Oh, up there in the jury box.
For the record, Valerie Quape, Carson City Health and Human Services Accreditation Coordinator and Public Health Program Specialist. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Health. This has been a project that the Health Department has been working on for about five years now. We started out with the beta test for the Public Health Accreditation Board, which we know as FAB, for their accreditation processes back in 2010. At that point, that effort was headed up by Dustin Booth, our Chronic Disease, I'm sorry, Disease Control and Prevention Manager, and then also by then Director Marina Works. Through that process, we have developed a Community Health Assessment, our Community Health Improvement Plan, which we've presented to you on various occasions, also our Organizational Strategic Plan and our Organizational Quality Improvement Plan. When we submitted documentation, just to give you an idea of the spectrum we have, there are 12 broad areas that the documentation is supposed to cover called domains. Within those domains, all totaled, there are 97 measures that we need to meet. There are a total of 304 examples that we had to submit for those 97 measures, each example requiring about two up to five documents, plus a documentation cover sheet, and a measure narrative for each of those 97 measures. So that comes out to, give or take, about 1,500 documents that we've been compiling over the last five years. A good portion of the documentation that we did submit was largely from 2013 and on. So, given everything that's happened in public health over the last couple of years, it's, we're very, very proud of ourselves for moving forward with this project and being able to actually submit our documentation. From here on out, we have, over the last couple of weeks, we've been able to, myself and Nikki, and then also our other staff members have been reviewing our documentation as a last-minute double-check. And we are very much aware of where our weak spots may be, and so immediately, in fact, this week, we've begun work on how, planning how we're going to address those additional weak spots, what we're going to be doing. So you'll be seeing more, more good things coming out of the Health Department because of this as well. There is a staff member assigned to us by the Public Health Accreditation Board, she's called an Accreditation Specialist, her name is Jennifer, and she is currently reviewing our documentation that we submitted on Monday, just for completeness, to make sure that we didn't accidentally leave something out, particularly something major. After that, we will be negotiating with her as far as our site visit team, so we do get a little bit of a say as to who's coming out to read our documentation and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, just to make sure that, A, there's no conflict of interest, and then, B, it's also a good matchup, so we don't have somebody from New York City coming out to Carson City and trying to do a qualitative review of us based on their experience there.
We can handle that, don't worry about it. We can handle those New Yorkers. Send them out here, I mean, we're, you know, we've been at this for, what, five or six years now? I think you're looking at some people up here who, we can take on all comers, so have them come on up, all right?
Fair enough. So we are hoping to schedule our site visit for sometime in November, hopefully early November. September and October are very busy times at the Health Department, and we want to make sure that all staff members are able to participate. Additionally, in preparation for the FAB site visit, we are going to be implementing some trainings, particularly trainings for the Board of Health and then also for our community partners, just to make sure that you are well-aware of your role, because the FAB site visitors will be expecting to speak to with our Board of Health. So, also, your schedules will be taken into consideration when we schedule the site visit, so you won't be left out on the limb. I believe that's about it. The site visitors will then prepare a short report, which we will have a chance to review, which will be submitted to the Public Health Accreditation Board, and approximately one quarter after the site visit, the Public Health Accreditation Board will make their decision. From there, we are either accredited right off the bat, or we are given an action plan, and from there, we have up to a year to complete the items on the action plan to then achieve accredited status.
Are there different levels of accreditation?
Nope.
Like, so it's not silver, gold, platinum, it's just, you're either accredited or you're not?
Exactly. Organizations are judged for, there's different types of organizations that can be accredited. So, for example, there are separate measures for state public health entities, and there are separate measures for local public health entities versus tribal public health entities. So the nice thing is that we won't be judged against the same measures as a state agency. However, we are going to be, we have been expected to meet the same local-level measures as every other local health department who is applying for accreditation in the nation.
And the accreditation, will that put you at a higher status when applying for grants?
Nobody said anything officially, but the writing on the wall is that this will help make us far more competitive moving forward. A lot of the national funders, such as Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the CDC, are not only backing the accreditation process, but also aligning their grant deliverables and grant requirements with the Public Health Accreditation Board standards and measures. So we will be better prepared for either our existing grants or future grants coming down the pipe.
So, is, how many other agencies have received accreditation? Is this like, we're in the forefront here, when I, and I'm looking across all the, we are, right?
For the most part, yes. There are less than 100 accredited health departments at this time.
And there are, I want to say, close to 2,000 local health departments? How many?
Over 3,000.
3,000 health departments within the country?
That's what I thought. Yes, and we are set to be the first accredited health department in the nation, even, or I'm sorry, not in the nation. Ooh, that'd be exciting. In Nevada, even if we do receive a, an action plan, so, and...
Great job, thank you.
The last number of health departments I saw that were accredited was 75, and that was within the last two weeks.
All right. Well, I would like to acknowledge the hard work of many of our staff at the Health Department, and in recognition of that, I would like to ask the accreditation team to come up and join Valerie behind, on the Inquisition Desk as Supervisor Brunkowski calls.
Let's all go down there too, so we can all go down there, we'll get a picture after we get into it.
Do we have anybody to take a picture?
Sure.
All right.
We'll get it.
So we're moving down?
No, you go down.
Let's all move down.
I don't want a photo. Kenny and I are ugly, we don't want photos.
Come on, Dr. Test.
At least we're in one.
They don't have it after you. I have my name. I'm in-cognitive. I don't know how I'm going to do this. I think I've just got to speak loud.
Just in time.
There we go. Thanks. We, on behalf of the Board of Health and the community, it's a big deal to submit the Public Health Accreditation Document. And, you know, it's a lot of pages, that's true, but it, those pages each represent a lot of work by a lot of folks in our Health Department. So, we'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to those of you who worked on this, and the first one is to Ally Garcia, if she's here, and I, Ally?
Yep.
There you go. Congratulations. Vicky? Hi, Vicky.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rachel, how are you doing? Sandy? Hi. Good morning, Sandy, good to see you again. How are you?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Dustin? How you doing? Angela? Good to see you. Good deal. Taylor? Hi, Taylor, good to see you. Valerie? All right. Who wants to take this? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Congratulations. And that's a good handshake, look at that, man. You can arm wrestle me any day, that's good. All right. Let me just mention the two that are not here. Karen and... Dr. Pentar, could you come out in front, please?
No.
Yeah? Dr. Pentar, on behalf of a grateful community, we'd also like to give you this certificate of appreciation for shepherding this, I know you've worked very closely, but on behalf of the Board of Health and all of us, you deserve accolades for many different things, so, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, all right. And, let's see, is, Karen's not here, right?
No.
Okay, well, Karen Allen's doing vaccinations, we have a certificate for her as well, we'd like to give that to her, so Nikki will do that. But, let's see if we can all get a big picture here, and then we will show that to the accreditation folks when they come out here?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
And I know that the board members all heard what they said, it's important when the, these, this team comes out here, that we put a good face on. So do your homework, get coached and all that stuff, and when they get out here, give them the schmooze. Not the schnoz, the schmooze. All right, ready? All right.
I just want to extend my thank you to the Mayor and the Board of Health with all your support, and all the support that I've received there at the Health Department. We've got a great team, and I appreciate everything that's being done, and will be done in the future.
All right. All right, let's see, who's got the, who's, who's got an iPhone? Yeah, everybody's got an iPhone.
You want yours, this one?
Yeah, iPad, that's good. Look at that. The Marines need a little size, that's right.
All right, on we go. Let's see, oh, I guess it's the Health Officers' Report next. One of the things that I left on your desks, and there's copies in the back, are, well, two things. The National Association of Local Boards of Health has a news brief, and this is the newsletter. They are sending it out by snail mail, but I'm going to request that it come electronically to all of the board members from here on out. And, and on that was a six, or a double-sided page, is a reminder of the six functions of public health governance, which I think we, as the Mayor alluded to, these are the sorts of things that, that we need to keep in mind as a Board of Health, and they will also be the kinds of things that the FAB Committee will want to know that we know. So policy development, resource stewardship, legal authority, partner engagement, continuous improvement, and oversight. And I'd like you to keep these things in mind as we go through our agenda today, but also as we go through our agendas each quarter. So, what have I been doing to stay out of trouble? Let's see. Yeah. Why are you laughing? Let's see. Oh, I did participate in the Governor's Policy Academy on prescription drug abuse, that was kind of interesting. Following the passage of AB 459, they contained a number of measures aimed at monitoring and reducing access to prescription drugs. The Governor is assembling a task force, one was in northern Nevada, another one was in southern Nevada, and then there will be follow-up meetings. Sadly, I think those of us in public health are aware, but the general public may not be aware, that Nevada has some of the highest rates of prescription painkillers sold, as well as one of the highest rates of drug overdose deaths per capita. These, the measures in AB 459, as well as these task force meetings, are to develop policies and programs on a statewide level, but there's also some things that we can do on a county level. Now, harking back to our six functions, partnership engagement is a big one, and in Carson City, partnership Carson City, I think should be strongly supported by all of us. They are grassroots, down-on-the-ground efforts that are really making a difference as far as fighting drug abuse in this community. Would you agree, Sheriff? Why, yes, you would.
Sure.
Yeah, that's right. You may have heard of presentations, for example, on the, on the drug roundup, but these and other campaigns definitely need to be supported and expanded if we're going to get ahead of our, ahead of the grim statistics, so we'll bring some more information about that. A second part of this legislation that I want people to be aware of is called the Good Samaritan Legislation. This removes penalties for citizens who render assistance to someone who is under the influence of narcotics. What has happened is that there have been a number of instances where two people might be using together, and one becomes unconscious, but the second person, who is still relatively competent, is afraid to call for assistance, afraid that they would, would get in trouble. And so, this Good Samaritan Legislation helps protect them and helps protect the person who, who has been more affected. And then, another part of the legislation, which will be especially important for our city's first responders, is legislation that allows greater access to naloxone. Naloxone, you may also know as Narcan, and it is an opioid antagonist. It comes in a couple of forms, but basically, if somebody's under the influence of heroin or oxycodone or any opioid drug, this will counteract that influence. Think of it like you would an EpiPen for somebody who is having an allergy. It will temporarily, temporarily reverse the effects, allows you enough time to get emergency responders there. It doesn't, it's not a treatment, in the sense that, you know, you give somebody that and all, they're magically cured, but it, it gives you some, buys you some time to save their life. So the, I believe the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department will both be working on policies and procedures to make this drug accessible when needed. Did you want to add anything to that, Sheriff?
No, I think you've covered it all.
All right, let's see. The sexual response, the sexual assault response team, this is definitely an area where partner engagement, continuous improvement, legal authority, all of those governance functions are involved. Members of the SART team recently toured the Washoe County facility, and we are in an ongoing effort to marshal resources locally. We're getting there. And then, let's see, last but not least will be today's presentation from the Resource Stewardship Advisory Group, which is composed of Supervisor Brunkowski, Supervisor Shirk, Nikki Aker, and myself. I want to thank you all for attending and your input and your questions, and we will talk about that report a little bit later. So, that's what I did. Yes, we do. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll do a motion. I move to accept the Health Officer's Report and give direction to staff on the Carson City Health and Human Services activities.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there, who's in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say...
One way or two.
Yes, say no. I'm still following Robert's rules, they're right there, thank you. We will go on to Item C, which is the Director's Report.
Thank you, and good morning for the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. And first off, I want to start with, we will be bringing the updated strategic plan and annual report to the Board of Health in the near future. As you can see, we've been pretty busy at the Health Department, and that's our, on our agenda to be working on and finalizing that, to get that to you all. So, I'm going to start with Human Services, and this year, we did a, it's a point-in-time count, which counts the homeless in Carson City, and that is headed up by Mary Jane Osterlander and her team at Human Services. So it was held this year on January 29th, and like I said, it's used to determine the number of homeless in the community, and those being served by non-housing providers. Also conducted was a motel count, and this motel count showed that there were 100 living in motels compared to 300 last year. Also is a school count, and it recorded 446 children experiencing homelessness in 2015, and that's an increase of 41 compared to last year. So, you can see on this graph here, in 2012, it took a, quite a dramatic dip, and... So you can see on this graph here, in 2012, it took a, quite a dramatic dip, and our understanding was that it, there was no real official street count done since it was not a required year. Required years are all the odd years. And one thing about this point-in-time count is each year, it seems to be done a little bit differently, and Mary Jane is working very hard to get it done consistently so we can have some good data. Looking at 2015, some of our assumed problems were, and, you know, when I say assumed, we are, we're trying to look at this and see maybe what went wrong, what contributed to some of the counts that we got. And what we have heard on our count for 2015, that there was an agency that told the homeless to disappear because our mean sheriff was going to go clean every, clean up. So, and this was told to us by different individuals at different times. So the numbers are based on a street count that's done in the morning, and when these, volunteers go out, these are volunteers that go out and do this count, and it's very early in the morning. It's requiring volunteers to get out of their cars, go through fields and actually count people. So, you know, you're relying on, again, a lot of volunteers that, you know, sometimes going out in the dark in these fields can be very scary and intimidating for people. So, and then what also happened that day, and you'll see on the next slide, is we went to FISH and interviewed the homeless that had showed up there in the afternoon.
Nikki, I have a question for you. I've always wondered why we're doing a homeless count in the morning in January, rather than, say, when the weather is better in June, when the homeless would be more visible. Because it seems to me that we're picking the one time a year, or the most obvious time of year, where we're going to get the least number of homeless that are visible.
And I know the answer to that one, but Mary Jane knows it better, is that that's what the federal government tells us to do. You have to do it on that day, and they have certain parameters as to how you do it. MJ?
Mary Jane Ostrander. Yeah, and that's true. And they have had years where they've done a winter count and a summer count. And the reason why they dropped the summer count, I really don't know, but they have done two in one year, and I don't think there was a significant difference in how many people were counted.
Well, year before last, you may recall, it was our only snowstorm of the entire year, so we anticipated that the numbers are going to be dramatically different. And then this year, I think the biggest concern was sort of the, because they know it's coming, so to speak, we had, unfortunately, the agency that decided to warn people about it.
So, and with the data that comes out of this count, what we are doing is we're targeting those chronic homeless people. And then I just want to talk just a little bit about the encampments. You'll see that depicted here by, it's a blue line, it's with the little Xs that are on it, too. And the week, so our number was below 75, and the week before, deconray had counted 150. So.
Nikki, if I may ask you a question, please. On that slide, it says number of veterans. Does that, how does that, can you relate that to the numbers?
You mean the number of veterans?
That's the number of veterans that are homeless? Is that what it signifies?
Yes.
The numbers that were taken back in 2009 versus the 2013 high points, are these, is there any way of tracking? Do you know who was taken on the earlier poll count versus this poll count? Are they the same individuals? Is that, is there a tracking mechanism?
There's not necessarily an individual tracking mechanism, if I could answer. Mary Jane may have a little bit more information. The reason they find out how many, well, there's a couple of ways to find out who's who. Not everybody is interviewed. Some of the homeless folks, as you can imagine, don't want to be interviewed. At FISH, as Nikki was talking about, that is a more in-depth interview of people who are there. And so that's kind of how they get the rough numbers of what percentage of these folks are veterans. We do know on a national level that a disproportionate number of the homeless in almost all communities are veterans. And so one of the, one of the positive out shoots of that is that a number of the Veterans Association, most notably the motorcycle clubs, the Veterans Motorcycle Clubs, come and help with the homeless count. And that actually is a very positive thing because they, these are folks that look like us. If you were homeless, these are, I mean, you know, they're, they're familiar kind of folks. We think we get a better count when they help us out.
Just further questions. Is there, when you make that, this count, do you separate male, female, age or anything? You have those numbers coming, right? Okay.
That leads me to my next slide.
I knew that.
We rehearse that, right? So this actually is looking at the interviews, so that were conducted later in the day. And as you can see, there's, there's more men than women, and the majority of these individuals are over 25. And this is also a slide on the interviews, and it's looking at those categories again that we had on that first slide. And what really to take away from this slide is, you know, there's a decrease in the number of first-time homeless people and an increase in the veterans, seniors and chronically homeless, as you can see depicted be, you know, for 2015.
I think, though, we have to keep in mind, and it's called point in time for a reason, is that it is just one point in time, and it gives us somewhere to start, but we don't want to look at these numbers as absolute, you know, it says, okay, well, there's five seniors who were homeless on that day. There probably are significantly more that we're not able to identify, but it gives us a place to start.
And Mary Jane later is going to do a presentation on, there in Human Services, when someone homeless comes in, what do they do, and what process they follow, and what's out there, and some different things that we're working on. Okay, next is Clinical Services, and I'm going to show you a different slide with the same stats here. This kind of looks like there was a dip in something, when in fact, it's just comparing one year to another. So this slide shows that a little bit better. So this was between January 1st and April 28th, and the, there at Carson City Health and Human Services, in the clinic, we saw 1,922 unique patients. Compared to the same timeframe for 2014, there were 2,047 unduplicated patients. And it's been reported that many of the Title X or family planning sites have seen reductions in patient volumes as we move into this era of people having insurance and everything with the Affordable Care Act. And they're seeing that some of the clients are migrating to other primary care providers in other communities. So, but we're not seeing that so much in Carson City, and that may be contributed to patient satisfaction and/or access issues with other clinical providers in the communities. You know, we've got a lot of individuals that now have insurance and Medicaid, and there's not enough providers to see all that, and not enough providers taking Medicaid.
I think it is worth noting, and I can't remember if you have it, your report, that there's been a shift in payors within the clinic. So the numbers aren't dramatically different. We thought, at some point, we thought that there would be less and less patients in the clinic, and that's really not proving true. And as Nikki mentions, I think a lot of it, to me, is that they get really good service, and they get timely service, so it's, you know, why do I have to go anywhere else? Okay, well, there's that. But we're also seeing a payer shift, where I believe Ronnie told me yesterday, it used to be about eight, six or eight percent of our clients were eligible under Medicaid, and now it's closer to 30%. Now, that's good news for the clinic, because there's a payer source, but, but the numbers remain, to me, pretty high.
And another thing, it may be, you know, for family planning services, once a woman establishes relationship with a provider, a lot of times, they'll like to continue with that provider. And we, you can see that there's a little bit of a decrease in immunizations, and we are thinking that that is because of the number of vaccinations that we're now doing in the school. So they're not coming into the clinic, but the Health Department is going into the school and providing immunizations there for flu and TDAP. And again, I'm going to show you a different graph here. It's all the same data from the previous slide. Again, this is the same timeframe, January 1st to April 28th, and we saw a total of 2,892 visits in the clinic, and it was compared to 2014 of 2,896. So a difference of four patients there. And again, you know, the same thing, it can, a lot of the Title X or family planning clinics are seeing a decrease, but we're attributing it to those factors that we discussed earlier. And this talks a little bit about the Medicaid enrollment. So Clinical Services is collaborating with the State of Nevada Department of Public and Behavioral Health. They come in and offer Medicaid enrollment services one day a week, which is Mondays. And from November 2014 to March 31st, the number of individuals that they assisted were 109. The number of individuals that received eligibility determination was 109, and they helped 98 enroll into Medicaid. They provided insurance information and then referred those individuals on to the exchange for 11. And we continue to promote Medicaid and health insurance enrollment on our Facebook page. So from April 13th to the 23rd, we ran a Facebook page ad and resulted in 4,921 impressions and 51 likes.
I think, though, that that's a service that we need to make more publicly known, that, you know, the folks from the State Department, the Health Department, State Health Department are down here on Mondays, because a lot of, a lot of people have concerns about the paperwork involved with Medicaid and all those sort of things. If they know that there's somebody there who can help them with the paperwork, they don't necessarily have to be coming in for Clinical Services, but they can come to the Health Department and, and ask for help with Medicaid enrollment as well. So that, you know, I think that that is a nice service for the, for the public to know about as well.
And I think it's important also to note here to the public that, yes, there is a cutoff point for private insurance through the exchange, but there's not a cutoff point for Medicaid, that you can still enroll throughout the year. Okay, now I'm going to switch over to Environmental Health, and this is a summary of our complaints for 2014. So as you can see, we received 31 complaints, of which 19% were confirmed, 80% were unconfirmed, and one resulted in an official notice that was issued. And on this slide, it also shows the four types of complaints that we received, the top four, and the numbers there. And those top four were improper food handling, foodborne illness, insects, rodents or animal infestation, and then just general premise.
So the notice on improper food handling, to get to a notice issue, so it was certainly a dangerous situation on the food handling, so they actually received a notice?
For the record, Dustin Booth, so that our system has a little checkbox that says a notice is issued, so a lot of times it could have been, they'll do a routine inspection at that time, or they'll just leave them, leave them a notice. So I'd have to investigate more what that specific notice was. It just was the breakdown of our system that one of the complaints resulted in a notice, rather than probably than a-
So it could have just been hand washing or not wearing gloves or so, okay.
Right, rather than a full, like, yeah, there was, so basically, there was no citation issued or anything like that, but it may have been more, rather than a routine inspection along with this complaint, that they just did a complaint investigation and left them a notice to correct this.
Okay, and within our epidemiology program, so, and this is talking about measles, which we've all heard about in the news and that. From January to April, we conducted 10 investigations, and those investigations were conducted by Dustin and his team. So tests are conducted through the healthcare facilities in Carson City. We really don't have a reporting mechanism to find out whether the sick individual received a vaccination or not at this point. So with the outbreak, there's one, the map here with the US, as you can see, Nevada had 10 to 19 in their 10 to 19 category. There were, actually, all the cases were down in Clark County. So, and then we've got this other graph here that shows, it's a CDC comparison. So in the US, there are 166 cases, and there were five outbreaks in the US, and the Disneyland outbreak being one of them, but besides Disneyland, there were four other outbreaks. So you can see in 2014 how that number of cases spiked there.
Now, the part of this slide that's most interesting to the pediatrician in me is in the lower left, the number of children who have exempted from vaccine. 1.8 in Douglas County, 1.4 in Carson City. I would like that number to be as close to zero as possible. Having said that, there are definitely parts of the country that would love to have our numbers. There are some parts of the country that have 3% to 4% of the children unvaccinated, so I can't, I can complain, I can't complain too loudly, let's put it that way.
Yeah, and there's even some parts that are even higher than that, depending on what type of exemptions that they allow. So in response to the measles, we at the Health Department collaborated, some of our different divisions got together, Clinical Services, Epidemiology, and then PHP or Public Health Preparedness. We came up with a measles strategic planning group, and it was basically in response to the Disneyland outbreak. And what we were looking in this group, we wanted to look at the identification of the cases, our employee verification of immunity, and like on the previous slide, looking at the school measles vaccination rates, or the number of exemptions that are allowed, what messaging that we're getting out there to the public, and the individuals that are working with the public, and then community and employer outreach. So we're going to continue meeting, this group is continuing to meet, talk about these issues, and because we feel that, yes, it's a measles outbreak that brought this group together, but what's coming next? And we want to be prepared to move on to the next disease that's coming down the line, and be ready and have that messaging set. And we're also thinking about doing a quality improvement project to further develop a response template. So if something happens, we already have our template placed, and we can move on it very quickly. very quickly. So my next slide is for Public Health Preparedness. And in April, one thing I really want to highlight here is the Family Assistance Center exercise that we conducted. It was held at the Gold Dust West, there were many different partners there. We collaborated with the Carson City Emergency Management, and it was a very good exercise. We ran through the whole exercise of a Family Assistance Center. And what, when I'm talking about a Family Assistance Center, what I mean, if there is a big event, such as the one that happened in Reno with the Reno Air Races, then this is for the family. And those are for those individuals that are inquiring about their loved one. And, and we had the sheriff there that participated, and, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add, it was a tremendous success and, and very informative for everyone who was involved in it, and is actually a very high priority in preparedness.
So, and we had Reno, individuals from Washoe County were there, they have actually dealt with this in their county, so they were there to help us through the process also. So, and in May, we've got, as you can see, we've got a number of different things going on. There is going to be another Family Assistance Center exercise, or there has been, it would be, in Washoe County, so. Also, in the PHP Division, we've got the school-located vaccination and community vaccination programs. And as we were talking before about the insurance and who are clients that come in, you know, what insurances they have, we are contracted with 18 insurance companies. So, yes, we have Medicaid, and we have Medicare for some of the vaccinations, but we are also contracted with private insurance and take those insurances for reimbursement. So the revenue that we received a date for the school-located and community vaccination programs, as you can see here, for school-located is 106,212.73, and I'm sure that number has changed and has increased since I submitted these. And for the community, it's 24,782, and then 16,000 of that is from Medicare. So, and I just want to really note here, so our insurance claims, I know Sandy has been working really hard in that area with the insurance claims. Our insurance claim error rate for January through March is two percent, and she came and presented a quality improvement project to all of you, and the benchmark for that error rate is five percent. So kudos to them, they've been working very hard and really trying to reduce those errors on the front end, as well as after the client comes in. So, thank you. So within our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Division, we've got our Ryan White Program, which works with HIV-positive individuals. And out of that program, Frances developed a care binder, which she distributes to individuals that she has contacted through the program. And this binder is for them to use as a reference for information, and also used as a place to keep all their important information together, so that when they go to their specific support groups or to their doctors, they have everything together. And within our Abstinence Program, which is one of the other duties of Valerie's, is she's working with Stray County School District Family Life Committee and the staff to get her program included into their health curriculum. And this is a big deal, if, if they approve that to be included, because it's pretty, it can be controversial, and sometimes the school districts don't want to include that. So she's really been working hard on that. The other is the comprehensive, or you'll hear us talk about the PREP, and we came a while back and asked permission to accept the grant for PREP. She completed two sessions using the new curriculum, Be Proud, Be Responsible. And she is also exploring new partnerships with Ronwood and Sierra Family Health Center, and Sierra Family, or Sierra Nevada Health Center, and that kind of came out of some of the meetings Dr. Pintar and I have been attending with individuals at Sierra Nevada Health Center. And we were talking about abstinence, and they really wanted to talk with Valerie and see if they can't include it there for their patients and clients. Also within that division is tobacco, and we applied and received the renewal of funds for Healthy Nevada Grant, so that's a grant that we have in the past. Some of our quitline activities have been, fact sheets have been developed for providers. Sandy works on this, and she actually has been quite surprised at how many providers didn't even know about the quitline. So she's developed a fact sheet for them, and has actually went, met and trained them to use the quitline, and is providing materials to the healthcare providers. And she just developed a new quitline magnet, and I was going to grab some and bring some, and I forgot this morning, but we will get them here, so that all of you can see and we'll have them here on display, so public can take them.
Nikki, can I ask you a question on that? Does that include anything with the e-cigarettes or anything like that?
They can call the quitline to-
Here, Sandy, go up here.
Hi, Sandy Warko, for the record, yes, the quitline will accept phone calls to do counseling for quitting electronic cigarettes as well, because the nicotine addiction is still part of the quitline's responsibilities, so that is included.
And, and down here, I've talked about the legislative session, you know, we've, there's some bills out there that are trying to get those electronic cigarettes included, and, and there's a lot to it, so we'll see how some of that goes. She's also developed a brief intervention sheet that she has shared with the providers, and went through the, went through getting a special use permit for our digital sign. So we're going to be getting a digital sign in front of the health department that is through our tobacco funding to display some of our health messages, put the quitline information out there, and so we're, we're pretty excited about that. Then Safe Routes to School, as we talked about, May is Bike Month, and we had the celebrity ride on May 4th, thanks-
Celebrity ride.
I was safe because I had help.
I was not going to bring it up. So, and then Bike to School Day was May 6th, we had five Carson City schools participating, as well as Lyon and Douglas County schools. And we have our trailer, I think all of you have seen a picture of our trailer, that trailer's been deployed and is assisting with teaching at five schools so far this And that concludes my report.
Are there additional questions for Nikki?
Nikki, when you do the, the counting of the homeless in the area, are, are they providing information of services that's available to them as, within Carson City, where to go and how to get services?
Mary Jane, you want to address that, or?
And I think she's addressing some of that in her presentation also.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, I think, I, I think a lot of that will be covered in her presentation, but the, the short answer is yes. All right. Yes, I, do I, no, that's just, yeah, I do, I guess, yes. I didn't write that in, but I'll ask for public comment. I only go with what Adriana writes for me here, so. Adriana doesn't say public comment, I don't know, I'm putting it in.
Next item, next item. Next item.
Oh, on the next item, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the Director's Report.
I move to accept the Director's Report and give direction to staff on CCHHS activities.
Motion and second has been made, those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will go on to Item D, which is the research, research, Resource Stewardship Advisory Group I'll ask for public comment then to begin, if you'd like.
For the record, my name is John Lawrence, I'm the owner and operator of Autumn Funerals and Cremations, and I just, I'm here today because it's been brought to my attention that there's going to be some discussion possibly about the county possibly taking bid for indigent burial cases or cremation cases, and I would like to just be a part of that discussion and kind of make you aware of any pitfalls that you'd be encountering as you consider that. Thank you.
Is there other public comment? The, the report is available here, I think you have, I have more copies of it. There should be a couple of them. It's six pages, and basically what it is, is it's a summary of all the programs that Carson City Health and Human Services is responsible for. And the summary, so there's a bit of a background, the first couple of paragraphs, and then there's, the first section is called mandated programs. Mandated programs are those that are required by law, that the city and/or county must deliver. Under each of those is listed the various programs that, that occur in there, and then suggestions as to what should be done in order to improve the program, enhance revenue, et cetera. So I know that you probably have had a chance to look at this. Supervisor Bonkowski, is there anything you want to add?
I just wanted to comment that this was an extensive process, I, I'll let Jim speak to this as well, but for myself, it was about a six-month process to go through all these programs through our meetings, discuss them, discuss whether they were mandated or voluntary, discuss the funding sources, and discuss the priority of each program in Carson City's health plan. And it was very eye-opening to me, number one, the amount of work that the, the health department does, the amount of programs that they are administering, and the fact that we depend extensively on grant funding to do all this work. I see a lot of heads shaking out there. And I think that there is a liability here on behalf of the city that we need to look at going forward, because if the grant funding were to dry up, the city could find itself in a very precarious situation. And that is the whole purpose of going through this process, is to take the first step for Carson City to look at a sustainable, long-term solution to the health programs that not only were mandated to implement, but also the volunteer programs that we feel are of a, of a certain priority that we need to find a way to fund them permanently. So I want to thank Nikki and thank Dr. Pintar for kind of leading those of us who were blind to this process, through this process, and really bring it to our attention.
Well said, and I, I must admit, I was taken back by, the more I learned, the more I was more skeptical if we're doing the right things, then I got fearful we're not doing the right things. It's, it is incumbent upon this board to look at how we can better facilitate our community with the health resources that we do not, and we may not have, and that we don't have now, we may not have in the future. And the funding for this really needs to be explored, because if you lose a grant, we're going to lose something. And what this staff does, Nikki, the doctor, it's amazing. And the more you learn, the more skeptical you get, and the, and the more fearful you get, that if something goes wrong, we could be in real jeopardy here. So I think it needs to be coming back to this board, and this board needs to look at it and see how we're going to accommodate funding should grants fail in the future, and there's possibility they will. And so I applaud everything you're doing for us, and thank you very much.
And let me just add, so as we move forward, we, we, right now, we have our Community Health Assessment, we're going to be doing another one. And out of that Community Health Assessment comes our Community Health Improvement Plan, and that's where some of, that Community Health Improvement Plan is our map of what services need, the community needs, and how we need to move forward. So that's how all this ties in together, and then even out of that comes our strategic plan at the health department, and as we're going to hear later, is the city's strategic plan, so how our strategic plan also feeds up into the city's strategic plan. So as you start really look at this in the future, and that it's, it's all linked together in some form or fashion.
May I ask a question about this? I do have one concern, if I may ask, legal, on page two of six, Item 2A, it says, "Staff is consulting with legal counsel to research if this is an option," and that, it goes back to the flat rate, I don't know if this has been discussed. I'm just reading what's in this report.
Page two of six, 2A, "Staff is consulting with legal counsel to research if this is an option," and this goes back to the flat rate, "burial services."
And that's something that, you know, as we talked about, you know, it's a suggestion that came out. I don't think we, we've moved towards that just yet, but we definitely will research whether, what we can do on this, if anything.
Right, and the, the suggestions that are listed under here, we, I think the, the purpose is really to get this report before the entire Board of Health, and so that, you know, do we want to proceed on these suggestions or not? And I know it's a lot of information to put, put out there, but, but if, for example, well, let's go back to the, the front page, and say, under suggestion number one, "Consider developing a tiered level of service with scaled fees for, for public health." If, if it was the, if the board said, "No, we don't want to do that," well, then we would cross that off our list of suggestions. So is there questions about that particular one? We don't, the, the point being is that, no, these are suggestions, nothing is written in stone, that have to be done.
I understand that, got it, but I'm still asking, is, have you consulted with legal counsel, is that, or is that, in the future, you're going to do this? So we're not taking an action, and before we take this action on Item 2A, we would consult with legal counsel before we do that?
Correct.
Right.
And it would still come to the board for future directions?
Yeah, exactly.
If we wanted to do that, correct?
Definitely.
Yeah, that was, that was a suggestion that was thrown out, and so if this report meets with the general satisfaction of the board, then the staff and I would start working on what these suggestions are and come back with reports of that.
Could I clarify then, just as a follow-up? So what you're indicating, if we accept this report, then staff will spend the time on these objects? So if we don't want to consider 2A, we should take that out today, because then staff wouldn't do that work.
Exactly.
So I, I think I want to clarify that, and I think that maybe we could take the public testimony, so we know whether or not we want staff to work on that project before we spend time on it. So you might want to-
Exactly.
-accept his testimony concerning that item, so we hate for staff to do work that's-
And then find out it's not worth it.
It's not necessary, right?
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Thank you, Board Supervisors, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Again, my name is John Lawrence, for the record, I'm with Autumn Funerals and Cremations. This is a, a service that is being currently provided by all the funeral homes here in Carson City, I believe, to the satisfaction of, of the Carson City residents. I know personally that I'm here to help families in all financial conditions, no matter what the circumstances are. I think this program was set up for- this program was set up for indigent burial cases, and which, I'm not sure what needs to be looked at, but as far as the means testing maybe need to be looked at more closely on how things are being approved to save money in the future. However, with that being said, I know that if the county considers taking out this particular service for bid, it does create a particular problem. Because we are all on rotation with the county for services that, for families that don't have a request. And sometimes if the death occurs suddenly, in some cases, they do not know who to call. So they will call what they call the on-call funeral home. So we're called out at all day and night hours to respond, to bring that person back into our care. And then with that, we have contact with the family, and then we walk them through the process in hopes that we're there to help them with the loss of their loved one. With this being considered, I just want you to know personally, the $550 that the county is currently paying has been paying this amount for over 25 years. So the amount is not absorbing it, trust me. It's about half of what I normally get. And I'm considerably less than a lot of other people. And my rate that I charge normal is a break-even for me. So every county case I do, I'm already subsidizing $550 or so myself, and, which I don't mind doing to help these people. But that's neither here nor there. The complication that it creates is if we're on call for the county, we respond to a call, and then the family decides they don't have any money, they go to the county for help. We've made the initial removal, we've got money out on it, without any possibility of being able to get that reimbursed to us. Unless you guys are considering this as part of the consideration of having one facility bid for that, taking care of the funeral home that made the initial removal. Because in my opinion, this is an attempt on, this provider offering the staff that they could offer this is appear trying to steal cases from the other facilities in town. Just my opinion about that. But I just want you to consider, you know, if you guys do decide to carry that on further, what you would do to help compensate the funeral homes that have already initiated that service. And I appreciate any consideration there. Any questions?
John, when did you find out about this and how?
I took, I talked to a city councilman or one of the board members, and they informed me that this was on the agenda in the future, and that, you know, what I thought about it.
Then I have a follow-up question for Nikki. What coordination was done for this item? Because I am the coroner, and I've never heard of this.
Again, it was just, it came out of our Resource Stewardship. Possibly something to look at. It was nothing that was said that we were definitely going to move in this direction. It was just said that maybe this is something to look at. And that's kind of where we're at today, is just looking at it if we want to move in that direction. And if we don't, then it's totally off the table.
Then I would like to add that because it hasn't been well coordinated, it would substantially alter the policies and practices and procedures of the Sheriff's Department by an outside entity, and I would not appreciate that.
I have a question for you as well, John, and you may not be able to answer this. But my question is, because it's in rotation now, if there were multiple cases where somebody needed to be called out, we can handle that now, because additional homes would be called out. If we went out to bid to a single entity, wouldn't there be a limit on the capacity? So if we had two or three, or say, four deaths in a single shift or period one night, would any home in town even be able to handle that?
I think that this isn't regarding that anyway, because county removals are on a rotation basis. It's not talking about a rotation. We're talking about the rotation is, this is referring to indigent burial only, and what the county actually would be paying for. So it would not affect the initial rotation as far as the corner rotation. So the funeral homes are going to continue to be on call to their assigned month to respond to emergencies and be able to deal with those things. And so what this is regarding is if you have, you go out, you make a removal, we'll just say at one of the local hotels of an indigent that passed away in there, and you bring him back to our facility, we contact, there is no family, we may be meeting with Sue Merriweather, and she helps this process. Well, if there's no funds there to pay for the services, that's when the county gets involved in. And that's what this is referring to. So they're referring to, this is the amount that's paid at that point in time to the funeral home or facility that gets to take care of the indigent cremation or burial, whatever. Usually it's cremation. They're just, the city at this point in time is just allowing for a cremation with no service. And so, and we will work with some of the other city officials to accomplish this. And then the city's funds is, we get reimbursed the $550 for doing this. And what's being suggested is that that goes out for bid for even less being paid. And I think that not only would that be harmful, and I don't think it's going to be benefiting the community in any way, it's, anyway, you follow what I'm saying. It'll screw things up as far as the responding funeral home. At least the responding funeral home now has the opportunity to recoup some of those funds, even if it is through a county funding situation. But to answer your question, Brad, most of the families pay for those services, even if they don't, when we're going out responding. Thank you.
So one of the options that we have then as a board here is we can approve this report, but strike 2A?
Exactly.
Okay. I just, so I'm just recommending that we strike 2A.
Right. And that's true, actually, as I said, for any of the suggestions, you know. And Jim, I see what the problem was, is that that word, it says, "Staff is consulting," should have been, "Staff would consult with." And then, you know, it has not been done, and that implies that it has been done.
Correct.
Right. Yeah.
Looking for it.
But again, so, you know, thank you, John, for bringing up some very, very cogent points. And there are probably other of the suggestions that we'll have, you know, again, these are sort of, what's the word, brainstorming. It's like, how can we improve service, spend less money, and, you know, get the crown jewels all in one. So we'll see.
And with this, we really, we wanted to have conversations such as this, and get the Board of Health involved in just things that we're even considering, and get direction and input from the Board of Health and the community. So thank you.
Sure. And maybe this is to Nikki. On 1C, "Support the transition to online courses and tests for food service workers." I was under the impression this had been done already.
We, right now, we're in the process.
In a variety of different languages?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, I just signed the agreement just the other day. So we, it's moving that direction very quickly.
Nikki, excuse me, NACO has on its agenda tomorrow, the appointment to a member to the Indigent Fund. Is that something that you think I should ask for or not? I mean, I don't know.
Mary Jane.
How do you get along with the Indigent Fund folks now?
She's been following some of this with her peers and that. If Mary Jane wants to come up and give you some insight into that, if she has any.
Mary Jane Ostrander with Human Services. I apologize, I didn't hear the last part of your question.
The question is, NACO is going to make an appointment or two to the Indigent, not the Indigent, the Indigent Fund. And the question was whether or not you think it'd be beneficial for me, because I'm a NACO board member, to apply for, to get on that board. Not that I need to know the board, but I will do that if it's important to do. If we've had difficulties having that fund operate properly, I'll jump on there.
I think that Carson City does need a representative on there. You know, right now, we are one of very few counties that are expending all of our medical indigent money, which is now not tied to medical, but we spend it all on medical. So I think having representation on there would be good.
All right. Well, let me see what I can do. All right. I don't know who else wants to do that on that board, but I'll be there tomorrow. Okay?
All right. And there are, in reference to that, there are some items on page two, under Item 2, that are mandated programs of how funding for indigent services would be best accomplished, I guess is the best way to talk about that. And then I would like to finally kind of direct your attention to the "Where to Go From Here" part. Not that we have to spend a lot of time on it, but it gives us a little bit of an idea. And as Supervisor Bonkowski said, grant funding is, having looked around the state and around the country, I think grant funding for us is a disproportionately large part of the public health budget in Carson City. And we really need to decide going forward how we will, how we will, as a community, support public health. Other questions?
And I just want to go back, a couple of quick questions on page one of six, Item 1D. Could you give me a brief explanation what this means?
Yes. This refers to Dustin's booth position as manager for epidemiology and
Environmental health.
Yeah, environmental health. What the heck do you do? This is a state mandated position for the County Health District. As such, his position is grant-funded. And that makes me uncomfortable. Because if that grant did disappear, the county would suddenly have to support his position with city funds. Or else the entire division would disappear, and by law, it can't disappear. So the idea there was to consider at least some general fund support for this position, so that in case the state grant funding disappeared, the position could be continued without too much disruption.
How many years has that been in, just roughly, 10, 20?
Dustin, I don't know. Place at least five, and probably a lot longer than that.
Since 2006.
Okay, 2006.
And then that would relate to, on page four of six, Item 3A, the suggestion of maintaining current levels of services by considering general fund support.
A very similar situation, in that our public health preparedness projects are all grant-funded. And as you've heard in previous board meetings, those grant fundings have declined. What was it, by 30% last year?
One of the funds.
Yeah.
So we have two funds, one for CDC, which does a lot of the immunization now.
Sorry.
For the record, Angela Baroso. And so that fund decreased 10% last year from the State Health Division. That money comes down from the CDC and pass through, through the state. So that was our CDC funding. And then our hospital preparedness funding got a 38% cut last year. And so we anticipate this year that it's going to be another 10%. And the CDC funding is leveled this year. And when I say this year, meaning the grant that starts July 1.
So the point being is that if, as a Board of Health, we feel that these are important programs to continue, we will have to find some funding to support that locally.
Thank you.
I believe we are ready for a motion, unless there's other public comment or questions from the board.
Okay, I'll make it. I move to accept the recommendations of the Board of Health Resource Stewardship Advisory Group with the exclusion of Item 2A.
Motion in second has been made. All in favor?
A discussion.
Oh, discussion. Discussion?
I intend to vote in favor of this, but I think, you know, what's important here, it's great that this is coming before us. Because for the first time, I think, in the last years that I've been here on the Board of Health and been the mayor, sometimes we look at public health as being a stepchild. And, yeah, a stepchild, yeah.
No shock and horror.
And I think that, you know, it's to our benefit and accolade, you know, that we're looking into these things. And I think now we're, with the meetings that, you know, that Jim and Brad have had, and Lori, I'm sure she's had the same, and everybody else, you know, finally, the activities of the Health Department are coming into focus, and how they affect our community. So I think it's great that we've had this discussion today. And I think it's great that we have these suggestions, whether they're right, wrong, or indifferent. It shines a light on things where we need to have those lights shine. First time, so I say aye.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And Ms. Ostrander, you get to come to the floor again to discuss the Human Services housing programs.
Hi, Mary Jane Ostrander, Human Services Manager. With another light to shine. I had wanted to come and just kind of introduce a couple of different concepts. You know, like the whole fab and accreditation project, we have standards flying at us in all different directions. And so we're looking at different changes and things like that. And so I wanted to introduce you to what we're doing. And since the point in time count, you guys saw some of the numbers and everything. And I just kind of wanted to give you an idea on some of the people that we have put into our housing programs since then. And since developing the slide here, we've also added another single father with a teenager that was living in a car, two other disabled males. And so our current caseload is 11 chronically homeless with medical and/or addiction histories. And then we have eight other households in our homeless program. Chronically homeless, just to give you a definition, is that they have been homeless for at least one or more years, or have had three different bouts of homelessness in the last three or four years. And so that's the head definition of chronic. That's the difference between chronic and homeless. And then, what happens when a homeless person comes to any Carson City agency? This is a new standard that's being implemented, still working out a lot of kinks in it. We have a centralized intake system. And what that is, it's an assessment that needs to be done. It's a HUD-approved assessment. It has about nine pages to, six to nine pages of questions. And currently, the Ronwood Family Resource Center is our centralized intake for Carson City. So a homeless person comes into any agency, they should be getting referred over to Ronwood. Ronwood does the assessment, and then from that assessment, they do the referrals out to the various different housing programs that are available, which includes and about a rural housing authority. They have, they do the Section 8 program, which is a supplemental program, a monthly one that a person can be on for a period of time. But they have also gained some other funding that allows them to move a person up on the waiting list for that Section 8. Currently, the Section 8 application period is closed. They are not taking any more applications. However, for getting the homeless housed, they have a set of vouchers that they're able to use. So that's one of the options. Then there's the Fish Emergency Temporary Shelter. Advocates also has a shelter. And then we have our HUD housing programs. So Ronwood would determine where it fits the best and refer them there. Some of the challenges we've had, and like I said, we're still all working out the kinks, so is, you know, we so, is, you know, we get somebody that comes over and they've done the assessment, well, we really can't do anything with them until we have a copy of that assessment. And, you know, part of the reason is, we don't want to reassess them, you know, they'll be like, "Well, I gave the wrong answers over there, so I'll change my answers over here." So it's important for us to get the same assessment that's already been done. And we can't do anything with them until we have that. We're getting better on that, we're getting them over there, or they're getting them over to us a little quicker, so that's good. The other, another challenge that we've had is when we do have somebody that qualifies for one of our programs, and they're living on the street, and one of the things that we have to do is, we have to get them housed as soon as possible. And that, they may not qualify anymore for the shelter, maybe they timed out, maybe they've done something, and so they can't utilize that. So we have to find somewhere to temporarily put them. That's one of our challenges. Don't quite have an answer for that yet, but we're working on it. And, let's see. The approach we are required to use by Nevada Housing Division standards that we have to fully implement by July 1st is the Housing First approach. And I know that this has been in the news here or there, or maybe you've heard the term, maybe you haven't, but I just kind of wanted to go through it a little bit because we are required to follow housing first. And that is, it's just moving people into housing directly from the street or shelters without any preconditions or treatment acceptance or compliance. It's getting them in, getting them housed, then we'll start working on stuff. You know, you have programs that, well, you need to be six months sober before you can come to our housing program. It's not realistic, unfortunately. But, so a lot of the mindset and the trend is changing away from that. Under Housing First, the provider is obligated to bring support services to the house. So we get them housed, then we start bringing in the support services. Then we start slowly introducing some requirements, you know, we need you to be going here, we need you to be going here. And the Housing First approach also targets the disabled and the most vulnerable homeless members in the community. We are not required to keep a waiting list, but at all times, and this has been a real challenge, but at all times, depending on the score that they've had on the index assessment, shows how vulnerable they are. Well, if we have somebody at a seven today, and we're working on housing, and we get somebody with a nine, but we're housing the seven first, we're not housing the most vulnerable first, even though the nine came after the seven. Another thing we're working through. I don't have the answer for that. But according to our standards, that's what we're going to have to be doing. Housing First approach also, it's been modeled, Utah has had the most successful model of the Housing First since 2005 they implemented it, and they've seen a decrease of about 72%. Although a lot of it, they're in the big cities. So we're being handed these standards to meet, and look, Housing First works, it works, it works. It works great in the big cities because sometimes they have one unit that has all the services available there, and the apartments there, they're in the big city. You know, so me and my colleagues are just all trying to make it fit more rule. And I think it could work. It can work. We work hard to do it, or to try the best we can. And so that's where, how quickly can our agency rehouse somebody? You know, once we get the assessment from the centralized intake, we're looking at the rest of the eligibility for our grants and getting them, you know, whatever identification that they have, sometimes they don't have it, they've been living on the street. We'll take just about anything, you know, they have. If they have a VA card, or if they have, we've got an ID from the jail, okay? You know? No, it works for me, you know? So, you know, so that's not a real big barrier. You know, once we get them in the house, then we're going to take those steps to get them proper ID and stuff like that. Other resources have to be exhausted, you know, are there any other housing programs they're eligible for, family, you know, things like that? So we have to gather all that documentation and stuff. We can usually get somebody housed within a week, depending on availability. We do have one right now that we're still looking for a place, and it's been about a month and a half. And I look at Sheriff because he knows who I'm talking about. So that's kind of what the Housing First approach is all about. You know, we are housing them as quick as we can and following those guidelines and that model. Like I said, we are running into some barriers. And one of the things is just changing how coordination and collaboration happens between all the agencies. And, you know, we're working close with them. And I have to say, we are all working together. I'm not here to complain about anybody or anything like that. We have lots of kinks that we're working out. Everybody has their own standards and guidelines that they have to meet and stuff like that. And we just have to all start tweaking them a little bit so that we can meet the standards that are being handed down by the federal government as well as HUD and things like that. So that's been really important. Our grants, our community services block grant, as well as our housing grants, are all requiring documented partnerships, MOUs, proof of collaborating. We just can't list, "Who are your partners?" "Oh, you know, we got all these partners." We have to prove that the documentation's going back and forth, that, you know, he's doing this, and we're doing that, and they're doing that, and all the services are getting together in a package. And that's, like I said, it's still a challenge and a struggle, and we're all getting there, I think. Which I wanted to show some of our, you know, how are we going to implement all of these standards and make it work? We are, some of the things that we do have that we're pulling together, the assessment, like I said, we're getting that quicker, and that speeds up our housing process. One of the things that we're going to be doing is getting to the shelter more frequently. Or one idea that we have is the shelter bus is going to drop them off at our door one day in the morning, just so that we could do like a little 20-minute orientation, these are all the services and everything. One of the things that we run into is, we might get somebody from the shelter that goes, "Well, I'm getting kicked out in five days, can you house me?" You know, and they haven't, you know, been to our office, they haven't, you know, participated in our workforce program. They say, "Well, I didn't know you were here," you know? That way, you know, the shelter could say, "Yeah." You know, we could say, "Yeah, you were here on the orientation here, remember, this is when you signed in." And just, you know, get those resources to them quicker. And, you know, I know that they're all told and things like that, but, you know, that's their excuse. And, so, you know, knocking those barriers down, no, you have to take some responsibility. That also gives us more time to find the proper housing form rather than just the five days, and get all the documentations that we have in place and things like that, and get them in and out of the shelters maybe a little bit quicker. Then another thing that we're participating in is there's a community coalition that has been created, and I believe the hospital had taken that lead. Lots of different agencies are at this coalition, are at this table. And, you know, including the sheriff's department, the hospital staff, our fire department, the emergency management services, we have the FAST, we have the MOST, we have behavioral health services, we have FISH, Ron Wood, us. And it's really what we need. It's a great team. We're all bringing our top 10 frequent flyers, so to speak, and coordinating services. It's great, and I'm really excited about this because one of the models that we're looking at as closely as we can, like I said, we're rural, so we have to tweak everything. But one of the models that we're looking at is called a sort of community treatment model. And basically what that is, it's a self-contained delivery system. And so rather than sending consumers to different providers for different services, it provides the majority of the treatments and services that the community needs. So you have a team, and everybody on this team provides something different. And you have a consumer that the team has identified and is in need or is the most vulnerable. And so the whole team just gets that person the services right away, you know, as easy as possible, you know? One of the tweaks that I, it's still forming in my head, but, you know, one application, one application. And so they don't have to apply here, and apply here, and apply here. They've been identified as a team, here's their information, you do this, we'll do that, and get it to all come together and get them the services that they need. You know, we're halfway there with that new coalition, that's our interdisciplinary team, right there. It's, some of the principles of ACT is the shared caseloads. And again, that's like, okay, everybody's got, you know, all the demographics they need to put in for their grants and stuff like that. We don't need this person to fill out seven different applications. You know, you've got the 24-hour crisis availability. You know, right now, we're working very closely with the sheriff's department and the paramedics on some of these people that have been identified. And if we're working with them, I'll pop Kenny an email that says, "Oh, we lost him today." Okay, sorry, you might find him. And so, you know, it's just all that collaboration. And the, you know, rehabilitative support services, mental health right there, that's a direction I'm excited about going in. We've got the foundation, and, you know, again, we're just going to be working with all the different agencies that provide different services, and really try to get them to look at some exceptions, you know, "Yeah, this guy's been kicked out of the shelter, but he's been identified as a team, can we do it?" You know, things like that. So that's where we're headed.
So, Mary Jane, I just want to commend you. I've gone to a couple of the meetings on those teams, and I have to say, I think you're definitely moving in the right direction, is to triage the individual with all of the players at the table at the same time. I think it's vitally important that our resources be utilized by each of these groups to hit those chronic cases and get them solved, and not duplicate the services of each of the individual organizations, because each of them only has so many dollars. So I think this is just a superb communication methodology to meet the needs, but not overstress the agencies either. So, well done.
And I'd just like to say, Mary Jane, since I sit on the tripartite board with you, I want to commend your coordination efforts. I mean, you do a tremendous job, and as we know, we have two members on that board that have come up through these ranks and are a success story in and of themselves. So thank you for all you do, because it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Mary Jane, I just have a two-part question. Challenges that you face with mental health in housing? And a big question, and there may not be an answer, are there challenges in housing when it comes to male, female?
There are challenges, I'll do the male, female first, in temporary housing or the shelter, you know, availability and things like that. For what we do, there isn't, because we're doing, we need to put them into permanent housing. So we're taking them and putting them into an apartment that they're going to stay for a period of time. So because we don't do transitional or temporary, we don't run into the male, female, and we don't have numbers that we have to meet, so, you know, "Oh, no, we've already met our quota for females yet." You know, we don't have any of that criteria that we have to meet. And then with the mental health, and I'm not going to pick on one, it's just kind of with all of the services, you know, we need to start getting out there. You know, a lot of agencies require somebody, well, they have to come into our office. They need to come into our office and fill out this paper. We need to get out there, we know where he's at, you know, he's, the hospital has been a tremendous help in discharge planning, so they're discharge planning. They're saying, "Okay, we're going to put this person in a motel for 30 days." So now, we all know that that person is in that motel. So we need to get in the mindset that it's okay to go to that motel and get that paper filled out. He's not going to make it in. You know, if they can make it to all their different appointments and everything, then they probably wouldn't be in the position that they're in. And I think that that's one of my biggest frustrations with a lot of different rules and regulations, let's say, is, you know, if you miss three appointments, you're done. Again, if they could do that, they wouldn't be in the position they're in. So, yeah, there are those barriers. And that's why I said, we got to get all the agencies to kind of tweak their rules and regulations. I mean, I'm not saying throw them all out the window. We need those guidelines and everything. But we also need the ability to have exceptions to the rule. We're dealing with humans. And if you don't have those exceptions, it'll make you crazy.
Just a couple of quick notes. The community coalition, they meet monthly?
They have been meeting monthly, yes.
Is that something that's open to the public?
Because of confidentiality and everything, no, it's not. We all sign a confidentiality agreement, and the plans that are discussed usually fall under HIPAA as well. So it's not an open meeting.
Would board members be allowed to attend?
We can certainly, certainly.
If you don't mind, because I do sit with the group, they are literally discussing patient care. And it is most preferred that the group that's at these meetings is relatively controlled, in fact, heavily controlled, so that we can share information, which is the absolute goal of this organization, is to share information. There have been cases, as it's led up to its onset, where one organization is not well-connected in, and it just creates larger and larger problems. That openness and sharing is, was the first mountain that we had to get over and across.
Well, I will go along with whatever the sheriff says, I've learned not to argue with him. So, thank you.
Me too.
Thank you. Other questions or matters, questions from the floor regarding your report? Thank you, Mary Jane. I think that was very enlightening, and I appreciate the work you do, because it's a tough road that Mary Jane walks.
Thank you.
Well, I see one other possible action item beyond public comment, public care to comment? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right, goodbye. So long, farewell. See you in, when are we seeing you? July 13th, something, somewhere around there?
I think it's July 16. I gave you a note on it.
Yeah, you did, I know, I lost it. All right, thanks. Goodbye.
We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We've got non-action items before the afternoon, so we'll take up item 23, the non-action items on legislative matters. I think everybody probably knows that AB 377, the prison bill, passed. It had one no vote in the Senate, but it wasn't a terribly negative vote, it was just concerns about the prison, I mean, the death chamber out there. And I don't know, anybody else? Nick, you want to bring anything up? Anybody?
Yeah, I'm happy to go down, just a couple of key ones, unless you want me to go through the whole laundry list, and I'll be happy to do that as well. But I think a couple of key ones that I would ask the board's attention to, and perhaps even to help out. There's a couple of bills that we're looking at, one of them actually was just signed by the governor, unfortunately. One of them actually was just signed by the governor, unfortunately. AB 106, that was the design professional bill that's now law that removed the requirement of a design professional architect, engineer, and so on to indemnify the public body, that would be us, for any acts either of negligence or incompetence or anything like that that arose out of their design. So, unfortunately, that's too late on that. One bill that it's not too late on is AB 330.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? Does that mean that we're going to have to go back and change the indemnifying clauses in our contracts?
We will, in fact, have to change that clause. So, yes, to answer your question.
That's in future contracts, not in past, right?
Correct. Yeah, future contracts. AB 332, Supervisor Shirk alluded to it earlier. That would eliminate the ability of us, municipal governments, from purchasing tax-free supplies and construction materials for public works process. Last night, I sent an email to all the appropriate legislators. Right now, it's being considered by the Assembly. We think it's a bad bill. The former Speaker is really pushing it, and every time we thought we had it killed, it just keeps coming back, and it may actually have legs. So, your personal attention, I would ask, on AB 332, and I'll get you the next time that it's going to be up for hearing. But we're worried about that particular bill. Couple other items came out of nowhere, actually. I wasn't even tracking it, but AB 460 is a reapportionment bill. It looks like that bill may actually have legs. That could benefit us. The so-called RORLs would most likely gain representation from this. It would increase the number of seats in the Assembly, and that would most likely benefit us collectively as the so-called RORLs. So, I'm going to continue watching that bill. That looks like it's going to move. It moved out of the Assembly. It's on the Senate floor right now. The NACO Home Rule Bill, SV 29, that looks like it's actually going to get through. I expect either today or tomorrow that it's going to be voted on by the full Assembly, and then that'll go to the governor's desk for his signature. SB 111, this is another one. This is a bill that we're watching closely. I see it looks like the sheriff has left. That would require body cameras on all law enforcement. It would represent an unfunded mandate to us. We have responded to that, but SB 111 would require local law enforcement agencies to put on every officer, every sheriff's deputy, body cameras. So, we were looking to -- yes, man.
Is there federal money available to supplement that if that does come down?
I haven't gone quite that far down the road, and we'll look into that. But at this point, it would require the local law enforcement agencies to do that. We may be able to find some grant money or something like that. We were trying to get it amended so that it would be enabling only, but right now, this bill also looks like it might be gathering a little bit of momentum behind it. That's SB 111. SB 482, that's the county salary bill. Just for your information, what SB 482 had done was raise the elected officials' salaries. It also raised by 3% for three years, the county commission, which this board would be considered one of. So, it raised the county commissioners by 3% a year for three years. It looks like that bill's going to get amended right now. I don't know. I'm still looking at it, where that would require a vote of the county commission in order to do that. So, the way it's written right now, if it passes the legislature and the governor signs it, the bill itself, the new law, would take effect and increase the salaries. But it looks like it's going to get amended, and I'll continue watching that bill as well. I know a little bit later today, our clerk recorder is going to be testifying for SB 451. I'm sorry, not 451. SB 433, that's the election polling places and hours, so I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Actually, there is a work session in Assembly, Ledge Ops. It's SB 421 regarding the presidential preference primary. And the way that the bill is written currently, that they would be moving the June primary to February and give the political parties the option to have a presidential preference primary with, in conjunction with the primary. I believe it's in work session today. I'm not sure what's going to come out of this work session. I will be there to support Secretary of State Zagasky. The clerks are against this, having a primary in February, and I'm sure a lot of candidates would be against it and have testified against it. We would like to keep our June primary. If the party or if the legislature does choose to have a presidential preference primary, they're trying to determine where the funds are going to come from. Currently, the legislature does not want to pay for it, but of course, the counties, we just did a spreadsheet to see what the cost would be for each county to present that to the legislature and see what a financial burden this would be on the counties to pay for it. But it looks like Secretary of State Zagasky is trying to work up and come up with the state funds somehow to pay for this. So, we're trying to keep it a very simple election, but that is, our support is to have it a presidential preference primary in February and have the state pay for the election, a very simple, one-day election with no early voting.
So, that would also move our regular primary back to February.
The current bill indicates moving the June primary to February.
Which is actually before our candidate registration period, which is in March.
Correct. That would move all of those dates for the judicial, I think, moves to September, and the regular filing is, will be November. So, you will be filing in November if this bill passes.
How exciting. We could extend the election campaign period by four or five months. I'm sure everybody wants to do that.
And over the winter months is, you know, and Christmas, that was a lot of the testimony on Tuesday, that, you know, people don't want candidates knocking on their door on, you know, Christmas Eve. And I think that's a big concern for a lot of the candidates or elected officials.
I think just also, very briefly, there are four collective bargaining bills. We're looking at AB 182, AB 249, Senate Bill 168, and Assembly Bill 280. The bills, you know, it's a parlor game. What's going to pass? What's the governor going to support? Kind of up in the air right now, but it looks like AB 249, which is cosponsored, cosponsored by P.K. O'Neill, we provided quite a bit of input to it. Provides just, you know, a little bit more common sense fiscal thought and action into the collective bargaining process. There's no nuclear strike against the right or authority to collectively bargain. So, it looks like 249 and SB 168, which is Senator Settlemyer's bill, looks like they may have the critical mass, but again, I mean, it's a big parlor game, what's going to pass here. And then, related to the budget, you're aware of the Department of Child and Family Services, their annual assessment for them to provide child protective services for us. It spiked quite a bit this year. It almost doubled from what we were assessed last year. We went back. We had the support of the governor's office. We had support of the chief of staff. I thought we had it corrected, but we just found out earlier this week that when the budget came back for DCFS, that that original number was back in there. This might be time, Mr. Mayor, to engage Senator Kiekeffer.
Yeah.
We look at it as an unreasonable and an incorrect assessment based on a faulty model that they have used. We do have the support of the governor's chief on that. In addition, we are not satisfied with the level of service and the quality of service that we have gotten from DCFS. The DA's been working that issue to correct and to improve that. So, I mean, we kind of look at it from both, we're not happy as customers to begin with, and then you just basically doubled what we have to pay. So, that's definitely not good news. But other than that, that concludes, with the exception of your questions, my legislative update.
We'll count this, future agenda items in.
So, I'd like for a future agenda item, if we could bring the boards and commission policy back to the board for potential updates. I noticed on several of the applicants today, items that I don't think the applications should have been forwarded to us based on our policy. So, either we have to fix the policy or start rejecting the applications. And so, one of the things on there is the, they can't have a city contract. And so, when you really start looking through all of our board appointments, a huge majority of the individuals have a contract. So, we either need to fix the policy or not let those applications move forward if they are in violation of the policy. So, I'd like to see that come back.
Anybody else?
Yes. And I want to bring forward at our next meeting, if at all possible, with regards to the possibility of some contingency funding, one-time-only scenario for the SART program, so that we can get that reinstituted.
Anybody else? Jim?
Staff takes it from there.
No, no, they'll just take it from here. They've got to take a look at it and staff it up, and we'll get it.
A couple of -- are we?
Internal Communications, go ahead. Shoot.
Okay. It's open for discussion on anything now, right?
No discussion under this one.
Okay.
You can talk, you can raise it, but we can't discuss because it's not gentrized.
Right. No, but it's open for discussion, correct? I can discuss things what I want.
You can talk what you want.
Okay. Thank you.
But don't ask us, I guess is.
Right.
Okay, go.
I'll talk to myself.
Do that all the time, so that's all right.
Yeah, I know. No one listens. I understand that. I really hope that this staff looks at bringing back boards and commissions. The policies that are in place now are not being followed, and there's, it's just off the charts. Even in yesterday's newspaper, the Visitors Bureau is having their meeting over in their office rather than the Sierra Room. We have boards and commissions meeting at different times. We're appointing people here that should not be on there, so I hope that staff looks at that. In the paper, there's talk about the animal shelter funding. I'll still bring up, and I've been bringing up monthly, the animal shelter. Nevada Humane Society has not started their Oversight Committee, has not even put it in the works. I've had communications with the director. He said he is. Nothing's been done, still not moving forward. And the guidelines for how late material may be submitted on board agendas was just given to me. I think that information should be forwarded to all board members so that all board members are aware of how late material can be submitted, because in the past, I think no one really knew the rules or regulations, however you want to put that, how late material can be submitted, and board members have had late material submitted, but by these new guidelines, that would kind of take that off the table. So, I hope those rules and regulations will be forwarded to all board members. For those that attended the Capitol Mall project last night, it was somewhat kind of exciting in a lot of ways, but kind of a little reserved by what's going on and how we're doing it. I think that since this project now has just been alluded to to me, I wasn't privy to the nondisclosure. I didn't sign that, so I didn't know what was going on with this project. But what's going on here, they said last night, the Hyatt has inked the deal, so the Hyatt motel will be going in there, hotel, whatever that's, however that's classified. However, when you look at the project, we're spending money on Third Street and Curry Street in the same fashion that this project is going to put in there the same facility or help the community in the same respect that we're spending over a million dollars at the ad Curry and Third Street. And I think this project, had it been brought forward to the board, we could have looked at this and tied it in better to what we're doing out in the community as well. I think narrowing the street, had we seen this project, we could have tied the narrowing of the street to this project, the Capitol Mall project. When you look at the project itself, of all the facilities going in there and the buildings and all the, per se, restaurants and everything, to, we're taking back to the Oversight Committee hookup fees for everyone who's actually coming in on this project, and we're going to lose a lot of money if they reduce the fees. So, I hope the Oversight Committee looks at something more substantial and stick to the recommendations they made earlier and hold to the fees that they are going to charge. I think this board should be presented, this project, the Capitol Mall project. I don't think we should have to attend a public meeting. I think it should come to the board where we can talk about it on our level, overseeing city funding, city aspects of how this project will move forward. There was even talk last night that we may have to buy a fire truck to reach the height of these buildings. So, I think this, I think the Capitol Mall project privately funded, I fully support it, but if it brings into it the aspect of how we're going to spend city dollars in the future and how we have to accommodate this project to buy a fire truck, as an example, maybe there's something else, but we need to look at that. And we can't look at that unless this project, I know it's going through the special use permit, but that in itself does not come to the board for a discussion of where we're going with this project and how we're proceeding forward. And I think there's a lot of issues that need to be covered and discussed at a board level. Whether that comes here or not, I have no idea. Thank you.
Other internal communications? I do have a couple of things. First, I was notified this morning that the construction schedule for the US NS Carson City has slipped. It'll now start in July, so we'll just kind of keep our eye on that. Next, I was invited by the State of Israel to attend Smart City Summit, which I intend to participate on on my own dime. I brought the agenda to hand out. It's a draft agenda, so I'll hand it out to you, but it's, let me just read a couple of the things that'll be on it. There'll be a question about how to create a platform for entrepreneurship and creativity in your city, presentations by leading Israeli entrepreneurs. There'll be a meeting with the Israelis Foreign Minister, of all things. There'll be a meeting, a personal meeting with the Prime Minister of Israel. There'll be a discussion on education, energy, technologies, and the urban environment. There will be advancing technology and innovation for young adults by a lecture by a Nobel Prize laureate, a discussion on high-tech urban innovation for developing a smart city in the areas of cyber, security, water, and energy. There'll be a discussion on city of ideas with meetings with Israeli startup companies and a kind of one-of-a-kind, one-of-a-kind shared working space where we can meet and maybe get some business over here. So, I'll be doing that on my own dime. I'm going to see if I can get the city manager over there on his own dime as well, but I'd like to just hand this out. It's kind of an honor to get to go to this smart city, and it's something I kind of want to do, so I'll hand this out to you here. Looks like it'll be an interesting way to talk about economic development issues. Next, this afternoon, we'll have the Airport Authority issue up, so everybody's aware of it. My law partner, and I'll make this disclosure at the end, at the beginning, my law partner is the counsel for the Airport Authority, so I'll be abstaining and recusing myself from that. And I understand that Supervisor Bunkowski will have a similar thing, so there'll be three people at the airport discussion. I may have to, depending on where we are today, I may have to leave briefly to vote at the VNT Railroad on its budget, but I think I don't, unless they have a, unless there's a quorum problem there, I don't have to be there. But if there's a quorum problem, I may ask if we can just hold things in abeyance for five minutes so I can go next door in the other room over there and make a vote. I think that's about it on stuff I have. Anybody else? Go.
In addition to the news on the Israeli trip, there will be a delegation here in Carson City next week from Paul City next week from Poland, making their second site visit to look at Carson City as a step towards establishing some medical technology companies moving here. So, that's good news for us. And then, we will follow that up with a third meeting with the Polish delegation that will actually be in Poland, which will happen later this year.
Yeah, glad you mentioned it. I'm going to go to dinner with those folks, so.
And that's through NMDA, correct? That meeting?
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody? Are we ready to adjourn or, not adjourn, but recess until 1:30? All right, let's be in recess until 1:30. We'll take up the appointments to the Airport Authority.